Good afternoon, everybody. It's Monday, January 6th, 5:30. We're gonna have the first VOS meeting of the year. Happy New Year, everybody. Megan Simeo. Ms. Barney.
Here.
Mr. Genosa.
Here.
Mr. Bozzello.
Is here.
And Andy Fitch is here. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for December 9th of 24. Do I have a motion? Alright, I'll make a motion. Will you approve the December 9th minutes?
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of December 9th. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Abstain.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for December 16th of 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for... Where's the date?
16th.
December 16th?
I can second that.
So I have a motion and a second to approve meeting minutes for December 16th. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that I abstain. Next item on the agenda. We have to set the date tonight for the deliberative session. We usually have the deliberative session on the first Saturday in February. This year, the first Saturday in February is the first. And usually, the snow date is the following week, which this year will be the 8th of February. I will need a motion on this.
When, when is the town vote? What's the date?
It's always the second Tuesday.
The second Tuesday of March?
Yes. We have a time constraint. We have to do the deliberative session.
Sure. Alright, I'll, I'll make a motion that we have the deliberate session on the 1st of February.
Uh, what time? It's recommended 10 o'clock. Last year, we did it later.
10 a.m. would be my recommendation.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a first and a second. The deliberative session on the 1st of February at 10 o'clock at the Skunk Cafeteria. All, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda.
Does we have to put the snow date in?
Yeah, can we amend that for the snow date? To add the snow date of 8th of February? That I have myself.
At the same time?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is we have some abatements that need to be done.
I have three abatements. I have the paperwork. Um, I have, the first one is for camper. They, um, registered their camper, but also still got a tax bill. And then they paid their tax bill. Um, and they would like a refund. It is, um, so they are currently overcharged by $98.20.
So I'll make a motion for rebate. Our abatement. $98 and...
20 cents.
20 cents.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second one that I have is for a person that we've given abatements to before. Um, it is for an abatement, only no refund for the amount of $1,827.23. I'm assuming once you see it, you will be, there will be no more questions.
Okay.
But instead of making it a no bill, I feel it's more, it's cleaner to come to you guys every time and continue to ask for an abatement until the situation changes.
You want to make the motion, Charlie? I don't remember the number.
Yeah, alright, I'll make the motion that we issue a rebate in the amount of $1,827.23.
An abatement.
An abatement.
Abatement, yeah.
I will second that. So I have a motion and a second for the, for the abatement. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The third abatement is for a piece of property on Thompson Street that the town of Ashland owns. And for free, I will fix it, but it wasn't, the bill wasn't turned off, so we weren't billed for it. Um, it is for the amount of $1,345.26.
So I'll make the motion that we abate the taxes to the town for $1,345.26. So I have a motion and a second on the abatement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That it?
That's all the things that I have in my folder.
Are writing them.
I will make copies for you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is report and announcements of the 4th of July committee.
Thank you. The Ashland 4th of July Committee is pleased to announce that this year's theme will be Stars and Stripes Forever. This year, the 2025 Grand Marshall will be a longtime friend of Ashland, who has always been first to lend a hand, has always been there to help the children of Ashland, and has been a longtime friend of the Ashland 4th of July Committee. Jeremy Hiltz. You have Hiltz Excavating. Um, we thank him for his outstanding commitment to the community. The Merry Rule Award is an award which is given to an unrecognized individual or organization throughout the community. This year's recipient will be a person who has dedicated many hours to the children of our community, has been a librarian trustee for many years, has served on the planning board, the zoning board, and the Lakes Region Planning Commission, all to keep Ashland a strong and vibrant community. Martine Badger. The 4th of July Committee thanks all for your support. Our meetings are 6:30 on the 4th Wednesday of each month at the Booster Club. Welcome to join us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kendall.
Welcome.
Next item on the agenda is the Economic Development Committee presentation.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to introduce, um, Peter Ott, who's the chair of that committee. And Peter, why don't you take a minute and introduce the, the rest? Because I don't think they're, they're known.
Or should I just go around and introduce?
However you want to do it.
I'm Peter, by the way, uh, right up on Ashland, on Highland Street. And I started initially with all these guys, we all started at the same time.
Sean Collins.
Say a little bit more, Sean. Come on, tell us where you are.
I moved to Ashland in August and, uh, followed up on this committee.
And, and you're the vice chair, I understand.
Vice chair.
Okay.
And I live up on Thompson Street.
Great, thank you.
If you ever want to catch me, I'm at Colin's Kitchen.
Fair enough.
Bonnie Pithoon, um, if you remember me from the Waste Energy.
Waste Energy, yes, Bonnie.
Um, I'm up on Owl Brook Road. I've been here for seven plus years and wanted to continue to keep involved with the town.
Thank you.
I'm Jenny Angel. I'm over on Memory Lane. And a part-timer from 1998 and full-time here, um, 2014.
Okay, Danny, thank you.
I'm Jan O'Floris-John. Um, I've been here, my husband and I, we've been here seven plus years. We live off, off of Levitt Row.
Thank you. Peter, it's your, your show.
So what's the best way for me to do this?
Probably here, so that they can go this way. We can pull it out and see. We already used that one, that one's huge. We can't see it.
Nobody, nobody in the, in the audience can see this.
Well, you can do what you want with it. Yeah, well, okay. Brison, can you get it on the big?
I can, but we're gonna, he's gonna need it. Probably be where you are. But I'm gonna, Chris, do you mind if we just switch? He's gonna switch with you, yeah.
Anybody comes with me?
And then there's an outlet there.
I don't know, I don't want to plug in because, uh, that, if I don't plug in, I'll have to keep the short. Otherwise, my battery will run out.
I don't like this.
Guys, I'm recommending.
Of course, you see my notes.
I know, it's strange. I haven't seen how this is.
Oh, so you guys are gonna see my notes now.
I have a question. It's up to you. Does anybody want a copy to make notes or not? Or are you just good with this?
Okay, I asked.
Did you make that?
So I just finished a Microsoft certification test and that's, that's what was left on my screen.
Did you pass?
I passed.
Alright.
It wasn't easy, but I passed. Alright, so we were, uh, chartered with, um, was setting a rate, or coming up with a rate recommendation, uh, for the campground this year. And so, uh, didn't really expect that you guys would see my notes, but, uh, there they are anyway.
Focus on that.
Let me just get this right, so I don't have to keep flexing around. Can everybody see that? Should I make it bigger?
That's good.
Of course, you're in the front row.
Yeah, it looks great.
Yeah, can you see back there? Yeah, close enough? You guys have seen it anyway, doesn't matter. Alright, so, um, I guess we, we suggested that it might, uh, make sense to start out with a, a statement that the campground, uh, actually produces revenue, uh, that helps bridge the gap for all of Parks and Recs, right? So we've got the, uh, your summer program, the after-school program, and then we've got our general, uh, expenses, which a lot of that money is coming from camp, campground revenue. Okay? So this is, the campground's a real asset to the town of, uh, of Ashland and not one to be, um, sniffed at. How do I do this? Sorry, guys. Alright. So right up front, I'll tell you, this is the recommendation that we ended up with. Uh, $3,800 per site. Um, and then something that we haven't done in the past is we haven't charged for RV storage. We haven't charged for boat storage. We're recommending, recommending that, uh, we charge, uh, $200 per RV and $200 per boat. Okay? And we believe, based on the, uh, research that we've done, that this is, uh, competitive, uh, in the marketplace. Certainly, what, what, what we see, we saw boat storage of up, up as high as four, four or $500, so we think this is justifiable.
And Peter, do you think all 23 sites will have RV cert and storage as that normal?
Well, we think that they, that they'll stay if they're there. You know, that is, uh, historically, and you got, and you'll be in a better, uh, position to, uh, say what, what's happened in the past, but based on, I don't know the woman's name that came the other day. Sorry. Um, yeah, I, I, I think that if people are in, they will stay. So I think that's a... As far as the boats, we're not gonna get 23, 23 boats. We don't have 23 boats there. The, the issue is, can we fill a campground this year? Based on people leaving? Because we asked them to, right? Okay, uh, then we came at this two different ways, right? What do we have to produce for, what, what type, type of income do we have to produce? And does the market justify the recommendation that we're making? Okay? So these are some numbers that, uh, Sean put together based on information that I think that he got from you, Charlie, right?
Town information from budgeting.
Yeah.
Expenditures, yep.
So the, uh, summer vacation program, uh, cost about $53,000. After-school program, $32,000. We believe those to be self-funding. Fair statement. The campground cost about $8,500. And then we had a general expense of about $53,000. Total expenditures. And notice that this is in 2023 because it's the last year for which we had numbers. Uh, the campground revenue at, at a current rate, uh, for 2023, and we increased that for 2024, uh, was 66.7. The campground expense was, again, 84.89, the same thing you saw there before, and then you, uh, this is just a reiteration of the, uh, general expense. Okay? Representing a $5,400 surplus when you subtract the, uh, expenses from the revenue. Okay? Here, this is another way, this is just another way of looking at that previous slide showing that the revenue was, uh, 109% of expenditures. Okay? Same numbers, just looking at it a different way. This is, uh, on a percentage basis versus a, uh, dollar value. Go ahead, Sean.
You want to put out that, that blue note is my note, uh, which I kept reiterating at all of our meetings. Is that, that what wasn't ever clear was whether or not campground revenue was, is supposed to cover the campground plus general, general parks and rec expenses. We just eventually took it to be that it was. That's kind of the plan, sort of like an unstated plan. So I just wanted to, on this slide, make that clear, that that sort of...
You know, one of the, the assumptions I think we had going into this was that we wanted the Parks and Rec budget to be self-funding. And, and basically, what you guys have done is you've made the assumption that the, the, um, the summer program and, um,
After-school.
And the after-school programs are self-funding. So that if the campground covered the general expense as well as the campground expenses, then in fact, the, the town residents would not have a tax burden associated with Parks and Rec. And so that, I think, was the, the underlying theme of, of the analysis, am I correct?
Yes.
And that's in line with the statement that we made at the beginning.
Right.
About the, um, campground closing that gap.
And that's how it has been.
Yeah.
Hasn't cost the people anything.
Yep.
Yeah, and that, those are, those are, okay, because this is a business. Those are things that are explicitly part of the mission and, and sort of the, the financing of, of a business. So I just, rather than have it be implicitly embedded within, you know, I just thought we...
Yeah, well, you formalized the formula.
Formalized.
And said, here's how we can compute that and, and derive the, the price of the campsites.
Yeah.
And then these are budgeted expenditures for this year. I noticed that we have nothing in here on 2024, but the, uh, summer and vacation program, $85,000, after-school, $27,000. The campground and is there some question about what's baked into that $17,000? You'll notice that that's quite, quite an increase, uh, over what we've seen. Sean or Ann?
Yeah, it, we talked about it because it's, it seems to be about $10,000 more than the average expenditures for the past several years that we had data on. And then we were also thinking about asking for, sort of having, having additional funds sort of built in for campground development.
And we'll get to that here in a minute.
Getting to. And I didn't know whether the $10,000 increase was already for campground development.
Yep.
And therefore, whether we'd be saying, whether it'd be $20,000 annually for camp.
Half of that $10,000 was for trees, um, forestry. In the past, we had been taking it out of building maintenance. We created a line item for that.
And so is there another $5,000 that's...
I can't answer to that. I think Ann's looking for it right now.
Okay. Anyway, we did not, uh, well, let, let me, let me move forward. Okay, so anyway, at this point, uh, the general expense was $65,000. So we, we ended up with about $195,000 budgeted, uh, for Parks and Rec, uh, this year. Okay? And you'll see here in my notes, I said Sean could speak to this if necessary. Uh, okay. Anticipated, uh, revenue based on the current pricing was $73,000, $74,000. Campground expense was gonna be 17. You see that from the previous slide, the general expense was gonna be 65. So, uh, campground, uh, in general budget, uh, expenses were, uh, $82,000, which leaves us with a shortfall of about $8,300 this year. Okay? Based on 2024 pricing. At $3,200 per site. And this is just really a, a restatement of that. Before you saw, uh, revenues as a percentage of expenditures in 2023 at 109, now we're down to 90%. So we're falling behind at this point. And keep in mind, we're falling behind without really doing any upgrades. That we may get to here at some point. Go ahead, Ann. Want me to come out?
Yeah.
Can you put it in slideshow mode?
I can, but I don't have my notes, but yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so... So picky.
I, I was, I was hoping I could do this offline if you guys wouldn't see my notes.
So why don't sit with me?
Read and do.
Read and do, yeah.
Can you just project?
Thank you.
Is that where we all start? Uh, the next one? This one, here we go. Is it this one, Ann?
So what did you have budgeted? Seventeen. And then for 2,000? Oh. This is 25.
Yeah, 25, right.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, the difference is the tree service and also the, um...
For them?
No. The trash, because the DPW used to go and pick it up from there, and it became too much, so we had to get a contract with Waste Management to do it. So that's the difference in those.
And how much is that?
Well...
Well, I'm just wondering, do we expect this 10%, this 10K increase every year? Is that gonna be a static increase?
No, because we're gonna have, whatever they raise the price for their stuff is what it's gonna be.
So do we, do we expect to have, so...
We are gonna have the contracted cleaning. We are going to have the, uh, tree service done. We are going to have, um, the trash removal. All that stuff will be a yearly...
Ongoing.
So, so...
Yes.
That's, that's, that's the question. Is the, do we expect to have tree work every year? Do we expect to have, certainly the waste...
To keep ahead of it, yes, because in the past, before I took over, the, it hadn't been done.
Yep.
And we ran into issues. And so we are having the tree bumpers come out every year and try to take anything that they see.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a question on what that bump was and would it be recurring?
All those things will be here, depends on what they give us for pricing for us to know what it is.
Okay, so let's, uh, pick up then. You good with that one? So we said at 195, uh, budgeted, right? Anticipated campground revenue, uh, again, at the 24, uh, uh, price was 74,000. Campground expense, 17,000. And this is where we had a shortfall, right? And we came up at 90%. I think this is where we left, where, where we left off. So again, in 2023, where, uh, revenue as a percentage of expenditures was at 109%, and now we're down to 90%. The break-even price here, if you look, uh, is 35.57. If we take that campground and general expenditures number and divide it by 23. And then, uh, we, uh, were, we've added an additional $10,000 for capital improvements. And if you've walked around, you'll understand why. Which brings us to about $92,000. Average required pricing, uh, would be 39.96. Re, that is revenue of expenditures, again, that same number gets us back to 112, which is about where we were in 2023. Okay? Questions on any of that? No? Yes?
Yeah, I think it's, yes. Clear, thank you.
We, okay, so that's the, uh, budget analysis piece of it. We also did, Ann sent out some, uh, competitive analysis information that we tried to synthesize a little bit. Hundred different ways we could have skinned this, uh, cat, but, uh, here's just some information that I put in here. And you'll notice that we have, uh, blue and green, uh, lines here. The green, uh, denotes what we actually have available at our site. Okay? So we started with the average rate generally uh, across all campsites in the area, based on your, on the information that you sent out. And, uh, the average price per site, and this might not be the true average because some places might have 100 sites, others might have 10. Uh, but the average posted rate was about $3,600. The median rate was $3,600. The average number of amenities, and I don't even know if that means anything, is four. Uh, the average, uh, rate with all of these individual amenities, you can see there. Okay, and again, the ones in green are the ones that we have.
Hey, we sell candy bars.
Is that considered a store?
It's a store.
Yeah. So I should put a store. Now that would bring our average up.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
We have a little store, it's just up the street 10 minutes.
Yeah, exactly. An ice cream?
Ice cream?
Yeah. Alright, so the average rate with our amenities worked out to 35.32. We felt that there was a justifiable, justifiable $300 lake premium. Which brings our rate, uh, to 38.21 using this model versus the other. Which is fairly close, actually. They, the two of them actually came out fairly close. What we needed, based on the expenditures, and what we felt that the market could bear. Okay? We took that 38.21, we rounded that down to $3,800. We took that thirty eight twenty one, we rounded that down to thirty eight hundred dollars uh per site. Then with the uh income from the RV storage and the boat storage, that's another fifty six hundred dollars. That brings us up to ninety three thousand, which is a little bit over what we needed. Um, there's some wiggle room in there if we needed it. And.
Does this include, have we ever, because we've never offered like real RV storage? Like when I store my boat in the winter, the marina is insured. It's like I carry boat insurance, but then if something happens at the marina, do we have to?
That's a good question.
But their, their access, they're required to maintain your coverage.
Yeah, we've always had to have our, the insurance has to be maintained all year.
I wonder if like, if something happens on our property that's out of their control.
But you're listed as a named insured.
Yeah, okay.
We have to get you lit, the town of Ashland is listed as our named insured.
Okay.
Ann gets those from us at the beginning of the season to make sure we have the proper insurance.
And you, and it would extend if you were storing.
You should have some with Primex anyways.
With what?
You should check with Primex.
Oh, Primex, yeah.
Good question, Peter?
Yeah.
On that previous slide, I'm looking at the range of the um the campsite prices. Do you have any insight into, how do you become a five thousand or six thousand dollar campsite? What, what, what was it about some of those sites?
Uh, so I'd have to go back and look at the details, but I think it was they had a store, they had a uh they had playground, there were uh stores, there were playgrounds, and there were uh entertainment.
So fifty N service.
Yeah, yeah, electrical, electrical service, right.
So that, so based on amenities, they're, they're really, there's a, an upward path in, in terms of pricing i- i- if, for development efforts and whatnot. So I mean, it's not like we're stuck where we are, it just reflects where we are at the moment.
Right.
And there are, some of the facilities, like their bathhouse is old and
Yeah.
and some of the facilities that were, that are, that are expensive have bathrooms that are nicer than what's in my house, you know, they're, they're very, very nice. And we're not there.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think that's the important point, though, that if we had better facilities, we would be able to get a better price.
Possibly.
Okay, because it seems to be that kind of uh but flexibility in the market or desire for better facilities.
I actually took photographs at the bathhouse. It's in really poor condition.
Oh, is this our bath?
It was mold and rusted weeks and.
I was hoping this was the really fancy bathhouse. Yeah, I was like, oh man.
And so uh if I can pick up on Charlie's point here, uh we have, we have upward movement here. John's husband, John, is gonna come up and, and talk about um things that may be of interest to the town at the beach. Granted, it's not, you know, when, when we have all these conversations, we, we, we sometimes blur the line between the campground and the beach. And uh for good reason, uh well, maybe not for good reason. Uh, it's hard for us to see one without seeing the other, but um I, I certainly think that if the beach ever approached John's grand vision, uh that we would have a lot of upward uh movement.
Right, you can see the, the range on the site, campsite with the beach is up to five thousand, and that's with other one moderate. The beach is an integral part of the, the pricing formula.
Oh, no, no, we're trying to figure out the black thing that was next to the.
It's a cabinet with uh security staff locked in it.
Uh, so it's not a dryer.
Look like it had been coming off the front of it.
Nope.
So any other questions for me? Or the team?
Well, just to read out your final recommendation on the pricing, just so we have it clear. That's it, so thirty eight hundred dollars is the rate that the committee is recommending. And then we have potential for RV storage and boat storage, which should be considered. And that.
That's our recommendation.
And, and that puts us at about eleven, twelve thousand dollars over cost, which means that there'll be a, a, an accumulation of funds for, for future capital development.
Didn't we earmark the, isn't the ARPA fund or the beach grants that just came out? Wouldn't, we earmarked something for the updated bathhouse and store.
There was, I think there was a discussion with bathhouse, but that's
Yeah.
part of the plan that we, we've been thinking about with the beach, that Jen's gonna talk about a little bit potentially. But it was money available and it's like,
What was that?
Well, if we did some money to do something like this, we would need a bathhouse and we just.
Yeah. Yeah, what was the funds that we applied for and we submitted the plans?
Uh, the county funds.
Oh, county funds.
Yeah, we got some money, right?
I, I, that's what it was. Peter, I'm gonna send this, I can put it on our website. Was it nineteen thousand?
Yeah, if you want to uh just shoot me.
Yeah, we got.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
We got the money.
I can do it.
That we earmarked for the beach.
Is it just finance and actual?
Got it.
At Ashland, that's what I'm checking.
Multiple.
Um, I've been in your.
Connecting the dots.
email, so yeah, I'm, cuz I can stick that up on the website.
Both what, the store?
Both buildings.
Oh, the store.
I can't do it now, cuz I'm not.
Okay, we did get the money.
Oh, we're gonna do that for nineteen thousand.
But only nineteen thousand.
Fred earmarked that for a different purpose.
What?
We put in multiple proposals and he put it towards a different project.
He told me that's what it was for.
He told all, I think we gotta revisit Fred, cuz Fred, cuz we voted for it, for the, for the beach. The select board, like approved the plans and Ann had.
Yeah.
Plans.
I, I think another comment from the pricing, you know, if we can continuously throw off this, you know, this capital improvement amount, i- i- it also makes possible perhaps a, a bond to, to make some major improvements in the next year or so. Because that, if we maintain that revenue going forward, and on the assumption we're able to refill the campground, that's what's, that's what's gonna pay the bond and, and fund the improvement. So that, that's a possibility, cuz other than that, you know, we'd be waiting five years to, ten years to generate enough money. But we can use that possibly for paying off the bond if we keep this as pricing formula.
So as a reminder, you would need to do a warrant article for like a revolving fund or a capital reserve fund. Um, cuz if you don't set it up that way, that just goes back to the general.
And, and Melissa, you need to help us, Fred's not here tonight, but that, that really is an important takeaway.
A revolving fund um twenty twenty three for like the police department, where they got, you know, funds for their details. So we have those as a revolving fund, they're not part of the general, they're held in general fund, but they're not just lapsing.
Right.
Um, so then they can buy equipment.
Yeah, and that, and that's basically.
So you would need to do the same thing.
And that, that's, you know, what Ann has requested, and I think we will agree that that's the desirable outcome.
Yeah.
And so we should move forward and set that up, so that this, this capital expenditure uh fund will increase and/or pay the bills as we go along.
Yeah, so we can, we can prepare the warrant article for that, cuz you wanna put it on this year's. Um, and so long as that goes through, then what we'll do is when the revenue comes in, that a portion will go over.
Is that, is that a really good segue to John?
Yeah, but Mercy, you finish with that comment.
Yeah, absolutely, I just wanted to make sure we had an avenue to, to get there, that's all.
And if we do have the twenty thousand, we should add that to the warrant article, so people know that we already have a base.
Yeah, absolutely.
If that deed is earmarked for the beach, we should add it to the warrant article.
Yeah, that, that's uh what, where that money should go, and that'll, that'll open that account.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, that's your segue, Peter.
That's your segue? That's my segue? To John?
Well, I, could I make a comment on the uh charges for you? I don't know about RV storage, but I, for my boat storage, I pay eight hundred dollars.
Yeah, I do too.
And that seems really low. We checked out uh some other sites who, that were outside, you have to find for your boat, and they were like five or six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So I think you guys are a little bit low on that, at least the boat storage, I don't know about the RV storage.
I'm gonna store my boat here, I'm getting excited.
Well, it, it's an amenity, if you take a camp slate, you know, at our newly published rate, then, you know, you kinda get a, a fringe benefit by low cost storage. And your, your point is that long term gives us some ability to, to grow the revenue, if, you know, that should become necessary.
Yeah, with my understanding, at one point, they did charge for boat storage.
Yeah, they always did.
And then when there was, there was a time when the price was raised and to kind of offer it a little bit, to let people.
Right, Ann remembers that, when, I think it was two or three years ago, when it went up like three hundred dollars and you sent out a letter and said, but just so you know, if you leave your boat on your site, we won't be charging for the boat storage anymore. So it was an increase that seemed significant to all of us at the time, but it was offset by not having to pay for the boat storage. And there's only, the, number five is probably accurate, there's probably about five people that leave their boats there in the winter. Cur- the current people, I don't know how many else.
So you got it right, five.
That's why we're here.
Peter, you wanna give a lead into the presentation that, you know, you introduced John first of all?
Yeah, so, well, I don't know John very well, but John's husband, John, is here. Uh, and uh I've seen the schematics that he's gonna present here, I don't know who else has, but they're uh, they're very aspirational. So uh if we can get to that point, uh, do, do you need this? Okay, uh, so I'll turn it over to you, you can do a better job introducing your husband than I can.
I don't know.
John?
So um, we moved here about seven years ago, and to give you a little background information, John is an international architect, he's done master plans all over the world. And when we moved here, he did a rendering of the beach. And I think it's good to look at it for the possibilities for the town. Um, everything on it is immutable and changeable, things have changed in the past seven years, a lot have changed since. And I think for the town, it could be the jewel. And they can, they can fall rolling, that's right. And the other thing I was asked to talk about.
Oh, come back.
Is uh.
Come on.
But I'm still asked for a, a position for a, a reserve title.
Well, let, let me give you, I think, a, a proper lead into this.
Okay.
The committee, to John, I, I was blown away by the work that he was sending me. Um, it's an aspirational design for what the beach could be. And, and, and I think you, you, it's, I'm, I don't wanna give it a big lead in because it's, you, you're gonna be impressed just when, when you see it. But it, it kind of reflected mine and some of the other uh Economic Development Committee members' idea that the beach is, is a town asset that's very underdeveloped in, in terms of what it potentially can be, okay? And so we want to introduce this, not only to our audience, but to, to the broader town residents, to get some sense of, you know, i- is this a vision that, you know, ha- can get traction and that, you know, we can, we can move ahead and maybe make some improvements. The first step in that process would be to just offer the town a warrant article after showing them this plan and say, you know, is this of interest to the town? Not, not necessarily at this point attaching any monies to it, uh but to get an endorsement from the town so that we could work going forward to maybe make some or all of this plan come to fruition. So without, you know, any further pomp and circumstance, John, please tell us about this amazing vision.
Okay, well, you took the root out of my sails. So in conclusion, you know, I'd like to just put this up here, um, so you can kind of see it. Dan has got handouts also. Um, as a way of introduction, my name is John Thomas, I'm a principal of design for Ware Malcolm, near the national firm with uh offices in North and South America, and we do a lot of international work. So when I first came up here, as Jan explained, we drove across the bridge, I thought, wow, this is really a cool bridge. And then you come over here and there's a chain link fence around there, I thought, wow, that's really discouraging. So um my, my vision was uh, incidentally, very god, at the, the Marina gave me some charts so I could plot all this on a, on a sheet to start with. Uh, so my, my vision was, when we drive up and down this street, you know, people park here and these kids run across the street here and they don't even look. Um, they did have a speed bump here for a while, but they took it out. My thought was to take this road and arc it. So it slows the people down, and I know they have the right of way going this way. But what would I propose here is a beach house right on, on the edge of the sand and a, a little entrance plaza. This, so when you're coming down the road this way, this becomes an axial focal point. When you're coming across the bridge, the same thing applies, or when you're coming up the street this way, this becomes uh a nucleus of the beach area. So the, the other thing I know, and I know there's a lot of uh issues with it, but the, the block wall here, I know a lot of people are opposed to it, and there's probably a reason why it's there. But if somehow we can get that down, and I know the gentleman uh was talking about taking one layer off.
Any layer is some gradient into the, into the lake so that it, it goes seamlessly to the water and you don't, you don't fall off.
Right.
You don't have your children walking along the bank and worry about them falling into the water.
Right. So the vision was this would be a, you know, and Jan is gonna give you the handout, so you can take it home, the same thing as this. But the beach house could have all kinds of things, rental things and, and a lifeguard's, lifeguard um room and, and some uh sales, retail sales, there you go. And then maybe there's a tower above where people can go up and look out towards the lake and it becomes an icon for the people out on the lake to identify the beach here. And then putting a boardwalk along the, wherever it is right now, and then have this arcing pier and then at the end, this terminus, would, could be a special events place. This could be boat rental um or boat slips, or it could be over here also. Uh, the other thing is with the, you have to get water circulation, so I think we have a hydraulic engineer work this out so that this water can still circulate. But we wanna maintain the sand, we don't want the sand washing out and down the river, that's one of the big issues. The other thing is, uh, so, you know, we're proposing maybe an amphitheater there and, and a couple other amenities. But my whole vision was, and I know this can't, a lot of these things are maybe impossible, but my whole vision was that this becomes a happening place, it's welcoming, and when people see it, they wanna walk in, in, into the uh facility. The other thing, I did another study. Janet, do you have all those plans? All of the drawings?
Yes.
Um, here, let me just take one. I did another study where we moved the parking lot, and I know it's all gonna interrupt the uh campground, but from a safety standpoint, we moved the camp, or the parking over adjacent to the beach, so this road would be uh rerouted to this area and then come across that way. This would take a lot more study, but it was just an idea to get the parking over onto the other side of the road so that it's adjacent to the beach and it's not, uh, these kids aren't running back and forth, especially when they have like the camps, uh, those summer camps, you see all those kids on the beach, uh, you know, it can be really problematic.
John, is your suggestion, sorry, is, would your, your suggestion be so that as you're coming down from the campground, that would be the road? Like they would join almost.
Yeah.
And then the bathhouse would be gone, that would be a new bathhouse, and then the parking, so the existing parking lot would become the road?
Yeah.
Essentially.
You, the other thing too is, you still have to have uh a security along the road, so kids don't run out on the road. So I'm thinking of bollards with maybe a low, low chain or something like that, that just uh defers people running straight across. Um, the other thing too is, you wanna charge for people that aren't residents to come to the beach. And I think it's one of these things, we discussed this a little bit this morning, that it could be kind of like an honor system when you go on to the metro in DC. You know, they, sometimes they have, they check you periodically, and I think maybe do something like that here or there's some other uh system to make sure that just about everybody pays, probably eighty percent of the people that would be there would pay. And with the beach like this, a new design, I think you'd attract a lot of people to the beach, whether they're residents or not. And this, in my opinion, is one of the jewels of Ashland. And I think it's really worth developing and seeing its full potential. Whether it's this design or another design, I'm just throwing out ideas so that you can take them and think about them and then develop a program that this stuff can be accomplished.
So non-residents do pay to use the beach, um, and there is something in the deed that, I don't remember the exact wording, but.
Sixteen, under sixteen is free.
Right, no, I mean for the pricing. It's, it says a specific for residents and then it can only be like double of what the residents pay for a pass.
The only thing I saw in the deed, when I read the deed, was um, those under sixteen had to go free.
Yep, that's in there. That's for town residents, yes.
But I didn't see anything that had anything that said anything about.
So the reason for that wall in there is DES did it because of erosion. Anything that you do in that area is going to have to go through DES. It's gonna be a tough uphill battle.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that's why the committee has, you know, has understood this is a long-term development. And so there, there's no finalized plan to move forward at this point. The committee is pretty much asking for the town to, to endorse the idea of development. And then this coming year would be devoted to contacting the DES and obtaining permits or finding out what is necessary. And then probably in twenty twenty-six, be able to put something forward that would actually be, uh, you know, a, a development project. So I, I think it's well understood that this is ambitious. But I, I think the committee also understands that this is extremely desirable for the town. We're hoping that other residents see it that way. Because thi- this is an asset that, you know, could be the jewel of the town. And it does require some, some work, some redesign of, of the, of the beach property. I mean, one of the things that stands out is that, I mean, currently, you've really got fifty feet of actual, you know, beach gradient where you can walk down into the water, you know, where that, you know, where the retaining wall is. If you could have a gradient with or over that retaining wall, you get a hundred and fifty foot and possibly even two hundred feet of, of walkable beach, which, which is just a complete game changer from how the beach is, is, you know, considered by the, you know, people who may be interested in using it. And I think that takes it from this little local property that you can get your feet wet in to where it actually could be a, you know, a, a, a place where, you know, not only residents, but people from out, out of town would, would, would have a, you know, a good time coming. And, and the only thing John didn't mention is maybe there'd be a food truck or, or something that, you know, we got enough of, uh, enough people utilizing the site and, you know, maybe a food truck or even a small restaurant that would, would further make it a desirable place. But the, the potential here, I think to my mind, and I think most of the committee and all of the committee agrees that, that this warrants some attention and see what we can do with it.
Yeah, I think you didn't want to say that.
You know, and I think the other thing too is, it would behoove the committee and the town to hire a hydraulic engineer. What can you do to stop the sand erosion? What do we have to do out here? And how do you keep water circulation while maintaining the sand on the beach area? So it's, it's an engineering thing that I think you get a good professional in and they'll solve it. They could solve the problem.
I think your Jenny does a lot to, to begin with because it removes the flow into the channel, which is, is, I, I think a genius kind of.
And this, this could be a flow-through right in here too.
Yeah, or, or I, I think if, you know, if it is solid, then it, then it does cut down the erosion significantly. Anyway, it's a, it's a beautiful drawing. Thank you for sharing it with us and uh, I think it's worthy of further consideration.
So I, I, John, one thing before you sit down.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, either, either out here or in this area, this, it's kind of rocky right now, but that could be, that could be added on the town. You know, I paid, I paid for, I have a, besides my classic wood boat, I have a sea doo. You know, for my age, I shouldn't have one. But I have a half slip over at the Marina down there. I paid thirty-eight hundred dollars just for the summer to rent that half slip. So you just think about the revenue that could be generated from this. I mean, it's really tough to get on the lake unless you own property or you have a slip.
Or you have a friend on the lake.
Yeah. So anyway, it's another source of revenue.
John, is your opinion, in your professional opinion, looking at these photos of the bathhouse? I, I mean, we do have money earmarked, we're gonna set the revolving fund. Should we, do you think we should tear these down and explore? Like in your drawing, completely new, or is it, you think they're worth solving?
I, I think you want to start new so that there's a new image. I mean, that bathhouse is in bad shape, let's face it. And um, you know, and, and I think you, you design it so it's usually, there's a lot of wasted space in the bathhouse. And um, if you make it more compact and more desirable to use and somebody, need, need somebody maintaining it maybe, I don't know who goes and maintains it now, but.
We have a cleaning company that goes in, yeah.
Well, since it's easier fix, I mean, thank you for doing it, that's nice. But I mean, I'm sure as everybody's aware, that's probably a five to eight million dollar project with, with what's on there.
With a twenty thousand dollar budget?
I can, I can tell you, we just, we just worked on one and it wasn't anything near that and it was one point five.
Yeah, we, we've got our own, uh, you know, DPW department that we could put them at work with.
Can I, guys, John, because one of the things we have talked about is, because we're, what, what the committee is asking for your blessing for us to work on developing a plan. And um, it was great, great that you've got the grant money. You know, and of course, we don't know what the restrictions or requirements of the grant money. But our desire was nothing that for this year, we talked about for this year, was clean it up, spiff it up and go one more year with what those facilities are. So during this, this upcoming year, with the committee works with, with people like John and, and talk to the gate, the stakeholders and people around and come up with a plan and not build a building before we've got the plan. Because if we do that, then we're gonna be like, oh, we wish we was here or there, you know, kind of.
Right, as a broader plan.
I guess our nirvana, if we could just have the year to work on developing a plan and including, you know, getting input from people in the town, people who, in the campground, people, people who come here to enjoy this wonderful area of state.
And fundraising, I mean.
And fundraising.
And I, I think it's important for this board to understand that we have a new committee. This is the introduction of a committee that took several months to put together and, and they've been, they've been at work on this mandate of, of answering these questions and making recommendations to this board. That's the, the valuable nature of this relationship with the committee because Megan, as you, you have these questions, what should we do? It, it's something that we can defer to the, to the committee and say, evaluate this and make your recommendation, help us make these kinds of decisions in a meaningful way. Considering the short term, as Jenny pointed out, and, and then how does that meld into the long term so we don't wind up wasting our time, you know, and, and wasting our money? So I, I would ask the board to, to be considerate of, of the fact that this resource has come available. And then I, I think they can make a terrific contribution to the decision-making that this board has to do.
And he's gonna kick me for asking, but um, does the board, does the committee have any recommendations on? I, I mean, we have to make a decision for twenty-five and, and how we allocate the sites. So let's assume we move forward with the recommendation on pricing. How do we come up with the list on, on, on who gets preference for the sites this year? I think that's our next hurdle.
That, I, I think, I think the way we work with the committee is that this board formulates the questions they want to ask. And they refer those questions to the committee and, and ask the committee to give their recommendation. Again, i- it's a recommendation, I mean, it can be overwritten, but I, I think we're gonna be in a much better place having that type of analysis as opposed to just trying to wing it on our own.
If you're hoping to fill most of that campground.
Yeah. Go there now.
It's, 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 it's late, it's late to the game now.
Yes, yes.
We need to get rolling.
We need to move.
You need to, you know, so, you know, the, you need to start issuing those contracts. So it was our understanding you wanted a rate and, and this is, this um, uh, Peter and Sean have done a lot of work coming up with those rates and we're comfortable and we think that's doable. You have a list of the people who used to be there, I mean, just as a place to start. And then um, once the contracts are, are ready, you know, to be able to be, you know,
We need, we need a marketing effort, that's right. Which is also something the, the committee can give assistance with.
How are we coming on the rules? Are we done with the rules now? Have we got them completed?
I don't think so.
Okay, we need to get that done.
Yeah, because the other thing, I agree, I think we have to start with that. We're getting a lot of questions too about, hey, can we come back? And how we make it fair for everyone of community spots and how we don't have the camp sites in perpetuity for eighty-five years so that no one can ever have an opportunity to enter. I think there's a lot of questions, which are all good questions, exciting for campground.
But if you're looking for the revenue for this year, you're running out of.
We got it, yeah.
Yes.
Agreed, agreed.
I'm, I'm sorry, um, just a quick note is, and I'm sure Ann Marie's probably getting a million emails from all the campers, but there's several people that have quit deposits on other places. An initial deposit. The final payment for those sites is due February first, which would mean they put all of their money into wherever they're going. Most people that I know want to at least find out what exactly your intentions are and if they are going to be invited back and if they are, what the new rules and what the restrictions as far as seasonal versus transient or having people who camper out every year. And I think those are just things they want to know before they make that final payment someplace else. And I, I know there's a couple of them that would probably be willing to forego the fifteen hundred dollars they're gonna lose and pay whatever they have to to be back where they were, depending on what the changes are gonna be. I mean, that was, that's everybody's concern is, are we gonna have to pull our camper out every year? Is this, are we gonna have to worry about being told we have to leave and, you know? That was just the concern. So I think if you have a timeline and if it could be done prior to that or just.
You're saying act now.
Well, just let them know that you're doing this and not just ignore them.
We need to button this up. Can we have the rules ready for our next meeting, which is the twenty-seven?
Yeah, I think for the most part they're, okay, yeah.
And the new rules will address um, the ability to, I'm not saying you have to move the RV area, but if in the event we have to do it this summer, they have to be movable.
Well, those are some of the things the board needs to decide.
That's right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there's a line in there. Okay.
Can we speak to some of her questions?
Well, Chairman, Chairman, do you guys have a question?
So, I mean, some of the things we've, you know, there has been discussion, a lot of this, um, some of the things that caused angst with the campers, you know, we've got, I mean, we're economic development, but anything that affects economic development, I guess is part of what we're doing. But it's some of the things where, you know, you've got rules where they're issuing permits and putting in semi-permanent structures and, and, you know, the question, should that be there or not? You know, it's like, but that's a whole nother thing of looking at that contract. But that's a good deal.
That's why we're looking at the rules.
Yeah, okay. But also to her concern about having to move every, every summer or every year, I don't think we were considering that. With the pricing, because a lot of the campgrounds that they're comparable, they, they are kind of like sitting there semi-permanently like these guys where they weren't.
But if I might, that's, that's not our target, I don't, we're, we're not campground managers.
Well, but then still Jenny makes a good point. I, I think that, you know, these are considerations that I, I think are being taken care of in, in the new rules and regulations, right? I mean, it's a, we, it's been decided it's a seasonal campground. If it's a seasonal campground, we, we have the, we have the winter storage option in, in the pricing. So that kind of implies that if you want to continue your contract for the following season, you can have winter storage and, and continue without having to remove, you know, your, all, all your belongings every year, which is inconvenient.
If I, if I might draw, draw a distinction, that's, that's a conversation for you guys.
Well, it's, no, that's a decision for this board, okay, clearly. The conversation is who's ever interested in participating and who's got some good ideas. So there, there's, there's no reason that, you know, suggestions can't be made or, or we can bring up these discussions. But ultimately, yes, I mean, this board will, will make the decision as to what those rules turn out to be. But Jen, Jen's point is well made. And, and I think, you know, the, the people who are considering either coming back or want to be seasonal campers, uh, once again, uh, really want some definition to that so they know where they stand and that, that, that's fair enough.
Yeah, and I think you hit the nail on the head. Are we gonna allow, you know, structures on blocks that need to be permitted? Or is this strictly RVs? You know, you park your RV, you have your RV for the summer and if you want to leave your RV for the winter, that's acceptable. So I think that's one of the big things. That's probably the biggest thing we'll have to figure out.
People want to know that, sure.
Okay, so because we have to have a public hearing for the rates.
Yes.
Are the rates of thirty-eight hundred dollars per site agreeable? Are we agreeable with those? We'll need to take a, a motion and a vote. Two hundred dollar per storage, uh, storage fee per RV, per boat.
Are we gonna, don't we have to wait for the rules to figure out if we're gonna allow storage? I don't know, I'm just.
If we wait for the rules.
We should get this down.
We should get this down because if we wait for the rules, then we have to postpone the public hearing and we need to get the public hearing in on our next meeting day.
And what are your thoughts?
And I'm staying out of it. I'm, I'm not getting blamed for what happens.
Hopefully you'll be thanked for what happens. Yeah, take all the credit.
We've already been thanked.
Would you accept the motion?
I will.
And I will make a motion that the campground contract pricing for twenty twenty-five is set at thirty-eight hundred dollars per campsite, that there be an option for a charge for winter storage for RVs of two hundred dollars and a charge of two hundred dollars per boat.
For the renter.
For the renter, that's correct.
And one per renter, I'm assuming.
Right, one.
One per each.
Yeah, one RV, one boat.
Do I have a second?
Or else I'm storing my boat.
Chris, speak.
Yeah, yeah, I'll second it.
No, no, I, oh, you look like you had something on your arm.
Well, yeah, I was waiting to second it for it to get opened up for discussion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So I'm against the winter storage. I, I just, the fifty-six hundred dollars that that's gonna bring in, a little, it's a substantial amount of money. The ridicule and hassle we went through over this last time with people having to remove their stuff, I don't want to go through it again. And I have a feeling that when people are able to keep their things there over winter like that, we're gonna run into the same thing. It may not be this year, it may to be the next year, but it may be three years, four years down the road. So I'm against that portion of it, the rate piece I can, I can agree with.
So can I ask a, quite a final question? Are you against the rate or are you against the people living there over the winter?
Don't matter.
Yeah.
The rate's fine.
What, what about?
The thirty-eight hundred you're talking about, right?
No, the two hundred.
Oh, that doesn't matter, I don't care what the rate is, I don't, I just don't think there should be overwinter storage.
So no winter storage at all?
Correct.
So you're really gonna suggest that people have to remove their RV every year?
Correct.
That's a big issue for people.
Chris, how about this? How about in, in the rules and regulations that we stipulate that periodically, if it's required for maintenance, there, there may be an edict.
That was already.
That was already in the rules and we still.
They had to be on move within twenty-four hours.
And we still got rape over the calls legally.
But if, if there isn't the need to get everybody out, then I think as Peter is alluding to, that's a, that's a game changer for a lot of the renters, okay? That's, that's because that they, you know, that, that's a cost associated with that and as we saw from someone, it's a significant cost.
Totally, but what happened last time was people were there for thirty years and all of a sudden we said you have to move for maintenance. We had lawsuits coming against the town that we were, you know, somehow uplifting people's lives. I, I think that's what we're trying to avoid is, is not next year they have to move it, but in fifteen years when everything has to be torn up again, what are we gonna do?
Well, and then I, you know, I think that's a matter of, you know, being clear and, and communicating the fact that, you know, this is a privilege, the, the winter storage, I, I think is, is the way you put it. And that in, in individual camper and/or the entire camp as maintenance requires may be subject to having no. in, in individual camper and/or the entire camp as maintenance requires, may be subject to having no winter storage and the, and the removal. I, I think that's kind of the fine print on this, but I, I think on a year-to-year basis typically, um, i- i- if we mandate that people have to remove all their things, I, I, I think it cuts down the marketability of, of, of what we're dealing with.
Or Charlie, what about in the rules, if Chris, this might, this would alleviate, it, it's no permanent structures. It's RVs, only RVs that you could physically-
I think that's, I, I think that should be clear, that, you know.
Absolutely.
The big problem is we allow this part of the function-
Driver tow.
Driver tow out with a-
I, I think that's the defining piece that says everything's gotta be movable, you know, should you need to move it. However, you know, if you don't, if we find that it's not necessary, you may store your RV and your boat there for the following season. Something of that nature is a compromise.
Just, I just wanted to point out in your, in your considerations, that the competitive price analysis of thirty-eight hundred dollars per site was done with the market analysis of the area, which all allows winter-
Winter storage, yeah.
I just want that so conscious to two hundred, it really requires a rethinking of the entire-
Yeah.
The, the rate for this season.
No, we, we, I think we're on the same-
I think that's, Chris, uh, something we just want to, uh, word very carefully and clearly.
Very, very, yeah.
And I, and I think not having the permanent structure goes a long way to, you know, establishing the fact that it's moving.
And we need to have someone, if we're gonna go that route, check them when they come in, right? Like, hey, this is the RV that's gonna be here. Not building decks, we're not putting up awnings like that.
Well, that's, that needs to be spelled out in the rules.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Onings if they're attached to the trailer, I don't have-
Oh, sure, yeah, one you can just-
The one that you, yeah. Yeah.
That, that kind of becomes satisfactory.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can work with that.
Yeah, a second, a second you're working with that.
I'm, I'm not gonna vote on this either way. But in the contract that we have, it has all this stuff stated. It's, it, it's in black and white. It happened this year because we needed to do repairs.
Well, we had, we allowed permanent structures.
Yeah.
Okay, that, that I, I think is, is where we draw the line and that makes the difference. I, I, I think when people understand that that things on wheels can roll out, i- it's, it's the people who made the, the structures and who built and, and even got permits in some cases, right?
And so no more tax revenue either, we can make it where it's- The structures still set, they still had to be able to move the structures within twenty-four hours. That is what it was stated.
Yeah.
But it wasn't the case. I mean, a lot of those-
It wasn't our fault that it wasn't the case that people wouldn't leave.
I mean, but-
I mean, I'm personally getting sued because of this and this is not my decision.
Chris makes the point that somebody has to oversee this. This has to be overseen so that if there is a, a structure that's-
It is, it has been overseen, but if somebody goes above what they told me to do originally, then it doesn't do any good at all.
Somebody has to police the site.
That's the problem. That's why I think we go back to, at the end of the summer, everything goes, which I know, I know, I know, but I, you know.
Puts us out of business, that, that, that's-
Totally, totally. I think that's the concern though, is if we don't ask people to ever move their stuff, then we run to the same situation, which is and, and the reason the other campgrounds can do it is because they have full-time staff that monitor and enforce this, which Anne, you are not going up there every day and enforcing like what everyone, nor do we, anyone-
No, we're a part-time employee.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, even if somebody from the DPW is, is commissioned to do that kind of survey work, you know, is everything here movable?
They have their own job.
You know, I think this, you know, this is manageable.
Charlie?
Yeah.
What about the thought that you have one campsite designated to someone?
Oh, yeah.
Who is in charge?
Yeah, well, I think that's a, a further consideration that, you know, well, we've gotten to that yet, but yes. There, there's also the idea that, that, you know, as, if, as this is developed, we'll need somebody responsible for the day-to-day, uh, transactions and occurrences. And that may, that may be a further development down the road.
Well, that was always the case before too, as Anne knows, that they used to have a, they'd get a free site, Ernie was there for a million years and Onwin was there before him and there was somebody that got a free site and their job was to make sure that-
But the thing is, when this all happened, that was the reason we were doing this, because I wanted a free site. That is what it said. So this is just to me, over the top right now, talking about this. I just, I want the board to make decisions and back them.
Yeah.
Tell me what to do and I will do it, but don't change in the middle. Because that's when things get messed up.
I think we can agree with that.
Yeah, I think we can agree at the thirty-eight hundred. We just have to figure out this.
I think that boat storage fee should come up though. Somebody I might back to the audience was, you John, that mentioned that
Yeah.
That should be higher than two hundred dollars.
We pay a lot, everyone as a boat.
Again, again, that's an enticement to bring, we gotta, we gotta bring people back, we gotta fill that site this year. This year we need to fill it, okay? Right, e- exactly. Yeah, that, Peter, that's a, that's a good point. Let's see what, let's see what the market will bear and, and let's just get the people back and, and that's an inducement.
Can you check?
No, no.
Okay, I have a motion on the, on the table. Do we have any further discussion?
Can we vote them separately? I don't know if we can do the winter storage vote until we actually figure this out. I know Anne's gonna slap me.
I just want, I mean, vote on the rules now, whether they're coming back or not. Everybody's, from the board is here.
If we don't vote on the prices tonight.
Right, we don't get there.
We're not gonna get there anytime. These people need to know by the first of February.
Okay, how do we-
But they also need to know if they're gonna be able to stay there or not.
Yeah, how do we-
And that's right, and we, they, we need to tell them. We need to tell them tonight, whether they can stay there or not.
Everyone on Pemba or television is about to hear.
You know, everybody, it's, it's such a critical consideration to, to the effort of getting people back and making them comfortable there. If you're not gonna be a seasonal campground, you know, if, if we were doing this weekly or monthly, this issue goes away.
Get your stuff out, yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, we, we've established amongst ourselves that this is a seasonal campground. And, and as the, the committee has pointed out, every competing seasonal campground has the option for you to leave your things there in the winter. But whether you pay for it or not's another consideration. Well, we, we can't go out there and try to compete with a higher, with a higher price and the inconvenience of, of people having to remove all their stuff. I- it's just not economically a practical consideration.
So how do we draft and enforce? No, you can't make a decision. You can, you can make a decision.
Can I make a recommendation?
That's what I was trying to say. Uh, is that you do this as a way to get the public here. You make your motion so that you can hold a public hearing to contain these fees. Because at the public hearing, you're gonna hear from the public and you still have time to make your decision to change it. The problem is, is we need to get in the newspaper. So-
All right, let's do it.
So why don't you do it in such a way that allows your rates to go to the next part and then at that meeting, that's where you make your decision. This vote means nothing tonight as far as-
We haven't had the vote. Uh, understood.
So, and those telling us we're out of time anyway. All right, we have a motion in a second. We'll stop discussing.
No further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion to the rates, the rates will be at thirty-eight hundred dollars. The storage fees will be two hundred dollar per unit.
Per RV and-
Per RV and two hundred dollars.
Per boat.
Per boat, one boat per site.
Per site, yeah, and camper per site.
And camper per site.
And these are the rates to go to public hearing?
Yes, these are the rates to go to public hearing and I'll make that motion.
I'm the second.
If we're putting in that they can stay for two hundred dollars, then that says they can stay, so that's the decision.
No, wait. I am gonna make these decisions at the public hearing.
Right, in other words, the public hearing, we can, we can finalize this if we have reason to agree that-
So if the public says okay.
Yes.
Okay.
There you go, the public says okay.
Right, you're still allowed to make a decision at your public hearing.
Right, you're just providing input.
Not you specifically, but I mean, like, every public hearing, just because you hold one doesn't mean that's what you're doing, because it's to discuss.
Or just discussing it.
Okay, so Andy's, you made the motion?
Yes, for the public hearing.
Okay, at your twenty-seventh meeting?
The twenty-seventh, Charlie seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstent, uh, one abstention.
That'll be a good meeting.
Are we getting permission or are we going, or is doing the design, are we doing a project design? We just voted on rates, but then we had that other question.
We, Mr. Chairman, we want to submit a warrant article, um, asking the town to en- endorse further development of, of beach, uh, of, of a project to do an analysis.
We're not spending any money at this point. We're just coming up with, yeah, we, we didn't-
We'd like to do research.
Um- Do research and come up with, so we can pursue starting with something like this and like some of this was, you know, very expensive, yeah, we know it. And but there are other things that aren't as expensive, we're, and then figuring out, you know, there is some money, you know, but kind of lay out-
But have an overall plan.
Yeah, we'd like to co- contact the DES, get them involved in our permitting discussion and, and perhaps apply for a grant or so.
We don't need our permission to do that.
Yeah, I don't believe you do need that permission.
You don't need our permission to do that. You can do what you want.
Okay, well, we'd like-
Then you gotta bring it to us and we have-
The committee would like the endorsement, I guess they're asking for, because-
We can go out and talk to people and this is what we're doing and it's fine with this board? No warrant article or anything, we're just able to vote.
No, no, you can, you can create, I'm saying is, the committee can create the warrant article. Is that, is that what you're saying? Yeah, committee-
No, I think the warrant articles are a lot-
Thank you.
Thank you. This is last.
No, there's no warrant needed. There's no warrant. What do you want a warrant for?
We would like the town's endorsement in the, in a vote that says, yes, you know, I think it's a good idea for the committee to, in the board, to look at development of the beach for, for, for future requirements.
Oh, it's like we did with the waste of energy, where we did like an exploration committee-
That's right.
To see if they wanted that to be done, otherwise if it votes down, you stop putting effort in.
Exactly, if, if, if it come, if it comes back, then, you know, the town doesn't really care and, and, you know, is not endorsing this effort, then, you know, then it stops.
Yeah, we did that for the waste of energy, uh, committee, if you will, like two years ago, to see if there's interest, keep working on it.
But that had money attached to it, correct? No, it's why they voted down to a dollar mark.
No, 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 the first one was just an exploration.
Right, the prior year was just an exploration, so that's right.
Yeah, just to see if people are interested. So I think that's what we're asking.
So you have a motion, Charlie?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a, a, a motion that the board put together with the help of the committee, a, a warrant article that asks the town to endorse or not, um, a development and planning project for the, for the town beach. Uh, no, no, no money to be requested at this time. It's just informational and, um, we would like to have the town endorse the process.
Do I have a second?
A second.
So I have a motion and a second to get a warrant article for a project at the town beach for this project at the town beach. Um, any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next item on the agenda.
Warrant articles.
Warrant articles, can I get?
Good segue.
There they are.
Good segue.
Charlie, let's just say the last bit is submitted, I vote fourteen times.
Okay, so we need to do it right away.
Fourteen to change, right?
Would you like, does this board want the committee to put the, uh, warrant article, the recommendation together or will the committee write it?
You have two, right?
Who's gonna write it?
You have the warrant, the revolving, that's us, and then you have the-
Why don't you take care of the other?
Peter, um, call a meeting for the committee that we, we can put that warrant article together for the beach. When is this getting?
How is it looking for them?
Yeah, too late, it's got, gotta be in before the fourteen.
I just had a, a minute.
I just had the agenda. Yes, we're gonna have the-
Yeah, I didn't-
You're gonna be a reader.
No, we're all gonna be readers. Yeah, they wouldn't be in here, right?
Oh, I just saw the ARPA fund.
Folks, we need to get moving.
I see we got it.
They're in the-
We did, um, I should know it here. Oh, there we are. Thank you.
And so what we'll do is we'll just pass this around, everybody can read one warrant article and explain it. It's the shortest one in the hand.
Oh, I see, I see what you're doing.
Okay, the first warrant article we have is Article Class V Public Highway. Shall the Town of Ashland vote to accept Class Five Public Highway known as Industrial Drive from United States Route Three to its end as laid out by the Planning Board as the right-of-way easement until accepted as a public way by the Town of Ashland? Said road to run from United States Route Three, a distance of two hundred and one point zero five feet, being fifty foot in width, recorded, recorded at the Grafton County Registry of Deeds. If such a public highway is accepted by the town under this warrant article, the developers of the Mill Pond Development will return to the town all right to easements and other usages of land owned by the Town of Ashland and utilized as park and recreation property abutting United States Route Three. Majority required. Majority vote required, sorry.
Okay, so in English.
In English, we're, 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 we wanna take Industrial Drive from Freidenberg, we're gonna have to pay for it. And this is how we do it. But the voters have to approve it.
And we don't know how much we're paying for it yet.
Well, it's the next article.
That's the next article.
All right.
And this is so if the Mill Pond Development goes through, we keep part of the park and then they get part of the drive or?
This is so no matter what happens with the property that Mill Pond is looking and matter what happens with it, they will come out on Industrial Drive and leave the ballpark as is.
Okay.
Oh, so the current plan, they would cut through the ballpark?
The current plan, they cut through the ballpark.
Or the gazebo and the ice rink.
So do I have a motion?
I will make the motion to whatever it is you said, we're gonna do it.
Second.
Do we want to do this tonight? You guys don't have this to read. Um, do we wanna go to Plan B?
You just email it to us?
We're gonna, uh, we're gonna have to have a special meeting if we don't do it today.
You have to have one anyway.
How many of them are there?
We have to have a special meeting.
So, Andy, why don't we do this? Why don't we do the cap reserve ones? Those ones are pretty cut and dry. We're either adding money or don't like it. Um, and then the ones that are longer that need more type, like, should review them?
How many are there total?
Yeah, we don't want a special meeting.
You have to have one anyway.
We're gonna have to have one anyway.
It doesn't matter.
So why do any of them?
Because we were trying to make whenever a special meeting you had.
We're trying to get them to the budget committee. Because they're already behind the eight ball because we took so long on the budget.
But the, mostly, that was a particular, a little more difficult one. Most of them are pretty straightforward, right? I mean, let's, let's, let's kind of get it done.
Why don't you do the monetary ones and then the ones that have to do with like emergency lines? Like, you're gonna have to read those and be in agreement.
Well, with this one, why don't we finish this since you already ran it?
We have a motion in a second.
So the mo- the motion would be to, um, vote to accept, um, Industrial Drive as a Class Five Highway.
Second.
Do I have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We did it.
Okay. Let's continue.
Yeah, we, we can do this.
Article eminent domain. Shall the Town of Ashland take by eminent domain the property of Freidenberg NOK located on Tax Map Parcel two, two-one-four dash zero-zero-one located at one-twenty-five Main Street in Ashland, New Hampshire for mus- munis- For mus- municipal purposes with a value of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars? And raise and appropriate said sum? By the issuance of serial bonds and notes not to exceed? Nine hundred and thirty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars? Under and in accordance with provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, New Hampshire, RSA thirty-three semicolon one, as amended? And to authorize town officials to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes? And determine the rate of interest of such bonds and notes, as shall be in the best interests of the town. Additionally, to authorize the town to apply for and accept grants? Or other funds that may reduce the amount to be repaid? And to authorize the town to expend such monies as become available from the federal and state governments and any private sources? And pass any vote relating there to of two-thirds majority vote is required on this. I have already chatted with Vino. He believes we can get the money from.
Northern waters.
Okay, in one way or the other, it's a good deal for the town, I mean, even, you know, if we use those as town offices and so what we have? Police station, and, you know, I mean, we're, we're looking at four million for a police station, you know, I mean, it's ready, built there.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, maybe we just some development money, but I, I would gladly make that motion to put that one.
Was that the whole entire area with the building?
That's the whole entire area.
Back where plum stitch and was and all that.
The whole thing.
Second that.
So how are we, are we taking this by eminent domain?
Yes.
What's the rationale?
They won't talk to us.
That is true.
Smart.
Yeah, they will not talk to us, um. I'm not sure what you're asking, Chris.
How is this actually eminent domain?
Yeah, like.
You can't just repossess that building.
Right, that's what I'm giving it. I have no clue.
Who put the warrant article there?
But this is going to have to go through legal anyway.
Who put that one on?
Yeah, who wrote that?
Cause eminent domain is something that's very different than what is drafted.
Yeah, like we're.
I mean, I haven't been in.
I mean, I know when you take eminent domain, you're paying someone fair market value for something, but this sounds like we're, and you have to have a reason, right?
Yeah.
You can't just say, hey, we're gonna take this guy's house.
It's like you're putting a highway, it's for the benefit of the community.
Yeah. No, it's, it's being shut down, so it's in effect, I don't say abandoned, but it, it's a property that's not in use. And, uh, you know, the town has a right to act in its interest, cause it's on the town property.
But they also, they own it.
When we get by it, that's not an eminent domain, though, they could, they could choose to just sell it.
Yeah, they could sell it.
Ye- yes, if they would talk to us and we said, you know, would you sell us the property, then we could have a negotiation, but they, you know, my understanding is they won't talk to us. So the fair market value is the nine hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Uh, they basically said this isn't in their timeline right now.
Yeah, no, look, and what may happen here, thi- this warrant article, you know, gets publicized, they may decide to talk to us.
They're allowed to say that.
You know, which is typically what happens in this.
I don't think we can do this.
I don't think we can either, I, I think it's legally.
Okay, let's table it.
Uh, so here's my only thing with that, if for some reason this works out, or you need a bond or a note or something, I have to publish something in the newspaper by special meeting.
Well, so we need to have the warrant article written that says we, we wanna raise the funds if the building, the property becomes available.
Right, right.
So now you know where this price came from.
Eminent domain, I wish we could just eminent domain.
He took it off of the. Um, he got it off of the assessment curves and, um, cause that has assessment and market value on it.
Yeah.
Um, but I just need to know if you're gonna have.
We could actually file, if that's what we're doing, we should just file eminent domain on all the, uh, mill buildings.
Right, yeah, exactly.
We're a owner of this.
I don't know if that's off the table, uh, you know, it, it's, it, it's, it's tough stuff, but.
I don't know what you wanna do, but I think.
I think we need an explanation, so we can't, we certainly can't vote on it with the questions we've got.
Yeah, I wanted to draft it. I, who, who, do you know if legal drafted it though?
No, Fred drafted it.
No, Fred drafted it.
Oh, I thought legal did, I was like, I'm excited.
No, it has to go through legal.
So, these warrant articles, although you may say yes to them, will still get a review by D R A, they may come back and say, you need to change this language to do what you're doing.
We might as well put it through.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's gonna hit the process anyway, so if, if it gets shot down, all right, it got shot down, so I mean, you know, let's make, let's make the play.
Legal also has to review them.
You are voting, you are voting to make a recommendation, which means if you don't agree with it, then you shouldn't.
Yeah.
I don't think it's eminent domain, I think it's that we're gonna offer fair market value for the purchase of the building, just because someone stops using a building, I mean, we can go and.
Right, if that were the case, everybody stopped paying taxes, or we didn't like the way their house looked, we could just go take it, I mean, that's not how it works.
Oh, unbelievable.
Okay, so how do we change that?
I think it would say, um, it's not eminent domain, it would be the offering of fair market value for the property. To enter into negotiations with Fortunburneup with the offer nine hundred forty-seven thousand for the, the buildings on the premises.
Don't you need an appropriation?
I don't know, you have to need an appropriation.
Yeah.
Yeah, which I think is what she's getting at, right, we need to appropriate this sort of money, but definitely, at least in, in my knowledge, not be eminent domain.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry that the town manager's not here, but I, I thought that the, the idea of the eminent domain is to get their attention. See, in other words, if you make a fair market offer, you know, they're saying, oh, you made an offer, we, we're not accepting it, so tough on you. But the, the threat of eminent domain, I think is a conversation starter, if, if nothing else.
But we don't, we don't have a rationale for eminent domain.
We don't have, you have to have a explanation.
Well, that's what the law, that's what the lawyer tells us, so it's gonna go to legal, the law, the legal, the lawyer will tell us, okay, this is your rationale, this is what you have to do. I, I'm, I'm not sure, it, it's that far-fetched, um, but at this point, since we're only putting out a warrant on it, we're suggesting it and it's gonna go to legal? There, there's no, just go for it, I mean, let's put eminent domain down and let's see what legal says, they'll come back and say, you guys are crazy. Uh, ma- maybe, you know, absolutely right, or maybe they'll come back and say, nah, you, you gotta play here.
You don't wanna draft for your next meeting. Yeah, okay, I'm, I, I mean, it's not eminent domain, so that's the only thing I'd say, it's, um.
Well, but you can't have a one-sided negotiation, you can't make an offer, you know, unless the other side is, is willing to receive the offer and respond, that, that's me.
But maybe they don't wanna sell.
Maybe they don't wanna sell.
That's the point, so we're trying to convince them they need to sell and threaten them with eminent domain.
We're gonna make friends there, aren't we?
I mean, we could actually be sued for like the town falsely entering into.
I mean, you can put it up for vote if you want, I'm not gonna vote for it, I just think it's too, it's too far there.
Why don't we run this one back through legal?
I think we need to.
And if they, so I'll run it through them tomorrow.
I like this eminent domain.
See what they say, but then what I will need is I'll probably have to reach out to you to see if you're in like further that, in favor of it? Cause you do need to put out a notice for a bond hearing if that's the avenue we go down, and we only have a certain date by which you ask to be in the newspaper and by which you hold it. So, how about I do that, I'll let you know.
Didn't we have something written up to like, I remember like, two years ago with the library, and we were getting those funds, and we were purchasing the library, wasn't there something along the lines of that where it was?
Oh, yeah.
We were kinda earmarking money or appropriating money from the purchase.
The five hundred thousand for the old school.
So that was something that the library was donated, not the town.
Right.
The library has their own trustees, so that's not money that the town funds have never touched that.
Okay, alright. Okay.
So somebody had donated it, they said they wanted it for a specific purpose, that purpose then passed, then failed, so they had to. Warning, um, so then I think, actually David can probably speak to it more than I can, but I think they had to speak with the donating party to see if they could.
Yeah, yeah, we don't need to go on a rabbit hole, thank you, yes.
So it's just a, it's just a different thing.
Okay.
Um, but that's not town.
Yeah, but I think if we write this about appropriating money should the building become available for sale, I think is what we're trying to get at.
Is to see if people want to have this piece of property.
There you go.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, the next article, contingency fund, no tax impact. Shall the town of Ashland vote to establish a contingency fund? For the current year for unanticipated expenses that may arise? And appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars to be deposited into the fund? The sum to come from the unassigned fund balance and no amount to be raised from taxation. Any appropriation left in the contingency fund at the end of the year will lapse to the general fund. Majority vote required.
What is the contingency fund for specifically?
It's unanticipated.
Unanticipated expenses.
Why doesn't, why can't it just come out of the general fund?
You, that's what this is, it's not an appropriation, it's a.
No, no, but why do we need a separate contingency fund if we have a general fund that comes and come out of?
Because you're not allowed to overexpend your budget, so basically this gives you twenty-five thousand dollars that no taxation raises, but makes it available for use.
Okay.
Um, so like, I think two years ago, we didn't end up using it, so it didn't go anywhere, this year we need to offset a different account with it, so it's.
It's a buffer.
It's a buffer.
Gotcha.
Okay, I'm good with it, I'll make the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
So I have a motion and a second to establish the contingency fund of twenty-five thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Fire Department Capital Reserve Fund, estimated tax impact sixteen cents. Shall the town of Ashland vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars to be added to the Fire Department Capital Reserve Fund? Established in twenty thirteen? For the purpose of repairing or purchasing fire department vehicles, majority vote required.
I was gonna get rid of that nineteen eighty-seven truck.
Snack.
Wait, that was set off earthquakes.
Yeah. And I'll make, I'll make a motion that we move forward with this.
A second.
So I have a motion and a second? To approve the Fire Department Capital Reserve Fund in, in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars? Do I have any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next article, Police Department Capital Reserve Fund Police Station, estimated tax impact forty-four cents. Shall the town of Ashland vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars to be added to the Police Department? Police Station Capital Reserve Fund, established in twenty twenty-four for the purchase? A purpose of purchasing or constructing a police station? Majority vote required.
Just a quick thing on this, so, um, chief got the design costs for it? And it came in at about a hundred and ninety thousand, um, so.
One ninety for what?
For the police station, so there's been a Police Department Study Committee that's been working, so this is the second phase.
Design.
Yeah, yeah. Just the design.
They would actually do the design next year, do the surveys, work and get a road agent, like, I mean, not a word, a construction agent? Um, and then the thought process in twenty twenty-six would be to actually put the project on the warrant.
After we take Freidenberg.
So the two hundred thousand dollars for the design?
Right, yeah, they came in at just under a hundred and ninety thousand, so, but at the same point too, if it's in the cap reserve, the thought was that if? It's in there and after the design phase, if it doesn't go through this fund, these funds can still be used on the current.
This takes us back to the eminent domain thing. We'd be better off going with that, with that two hundred thousand dollars for study, you can make.
I'm keen to do an eminent domain thing.
So, maybe we change a lot, you, you're onto something, though, maybe we change the language in this to say that it is, you know, not only for the design, but it would go into a fund for the purchase of, if a building should become available or something like that.
Well, it are.
For purchasing or constructing a police station.
Oh, okay, sorry, I missed that part.
That's okay. That's why we did it in such a way that like, you couldn't, still be in.
The, the problem is, I mean, if it's two hundred thousand dollars for a study, I mean, we, we're never gonna pay for a four million dollar new police department building, I mean, it's just not in the, in the cards, the way things are going. So, to, to be going too far down this road, you know, I, I don't, I don't know, that, that just kinda suggests we're gonna find ourselves with a big bill coming up.
Well, just a reminder for those who don't know, this committee was put together after a primex, um, audit was done, that basically said our department is not.
It's not up to spec.
Yeah, so the committee started and they are doing it in a, in phases to make sure that there's still support from the community, that's their thought process there.
Yeah, we, I mean, we need to find a way of to fund this.
Well, and I think we need to find a way to bring the price down, cause four, four million dollars for, for a police station in a town this size is, is crazy.
I didn't know where four million dollars came from, we haven't gotten a price at all and haven't gotten any.
I don't.
That was just mentioned.
There, there were, there were some estimates that were gotten maybe a year and a half ago, uh, uh, when, when the first police committee was formed? You know, I remember getting some feedback from the chief that, you know, there was a bunch of estimates, two million, four million, I mean, they were all over the place, but? It, it, it was, it wa- all of which was not affordable, and I believe the board at the time just said, you know, we'll put this on the back burner because we don't know where the money's coming from? Uh, I think we're in the same place, we don't know where the money's coming from, um, it, it, it sounds like a lot of money to be looking at this.
So they did a study, or they want the money to do a study?
So, so the Police Department Committee with Andy and I were at all of the meetings for. We talked with a, um, we got an architect that's really like in, um?
Keep it budgetary.
Really wants to help this community, like was really excited to see that the Capital Reserve Fund last year was created, like very involved with us. Um, so they did some specs for us this year, and from those specs came up with estimated design phase costs? Which is why we're asking for two hundred thousand. So this is just to do the actual design to find out how much it's gonna cost, cause like, there's like well holes and there's se- um, what was it, the sewage tank, Andy? Like, there's been a lot of discussions about different parts of using this property to move forward. So that was the avenue the Police Department Committee had been going down.
My, my feeling is we put this on hold waiting to see what happens to the eminent domain issue, uh, I mean, that, that's.
Really eminent domain.
I mean, for two hundred thousand dollars, we could, you know, that could be the, the building, it would be the best.
What happens with this, with this money, right, like if, if this warrant article gets passed? And this mon- like, obviously, we get this, this study, we're not gonna start any time construction soon, right? I mean, does this money keep rolling over, or do you?
So it goes into a Capital Reserve Fund, which is non-lapsing, which is why I was saying that this money would go into the cap reserves if it?
Right.
If this, the design phase comes in under, the remaining funds still fit in that reserve fund to be used for anything to do with the Police Department, whether it's a different building, whether it's a current building.
Even the purchase of a building, yeah, so I think this is why we need to have it go through, cause if anything related to the police building.
And do we, do we have to go for two hundred thousand, we need to, can we cut it in half, and do a hundred thousand dollars?
That's crazy.
I, I think you put two hundred thousand there and get spent, it's gonna get spent, cause I, I know what, you know, these engineers charge.
You guys have to have legal purchases, so if you tell him that you can't do the design, you, you won't do the design, it like, we have to ask your permission to spend that money anyway.
So in other words, they have to submit the estimate or proposal for the engineering?
Well, your chief would come to you and say, hey, we would like to do this purchase and the money needs to come from the cap reserve fund. That's why like, I'll come to you and be like, hey, we have this, can we purchase this from cap reserve? I mean, at the end of the day, you're still the agents to expend, if you tell us we can't do it, then we can't do it.
Yeah, that's why. That's why I think we need to, we need to keep it higher, right, cause we don't wanna get in the same boat we were in with the Water Department? Where we, we were so far behind, right, and we have to do this, this rating, or at least we start getting this money in Capital Reserve Fund? We, we know the building's gonna be expensive, whether or not it's five hundred thousand, a million, four million? We have control over that, so I think the sooner we get this money into the fund, the less we're gonna have to get down the road a year, cause we're already gonna have that big move, we're gonna front load it.
This has a tax impact, what was it, like, point four four?
Forty-four cents.
That's handsome.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's not nothing, I, I mean, that's a tax impact, so I, I mean, I, I don't see getting to two hundred thousand, I mean, I, I, you can convince me that a hundred thousand dollars maybe to, you know? Let's keep this under control and, and say that's what you got to work with, and, all right, come back and, you know, give us an estimate for eighty, and maybe we'll, we'll buy into it, but? I, I don't think we go to two hundred on, on this for a design, uh, I think that tax impact, it is a tough year, we're, we're already.
Yeah.
You know, the, the taxes are going up, we, we, you know, we don't need to just be piling on, and I, I think that's what this is doing. So, I, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm not for the two hundred thousand, I, I think that's overspending on this.
Any further discussion?
No. Stay out.
I mean, I don't, I don't disagree with Charlie, I mean, if, if we can make a small cut and bring that down a little bit, cause you know, every one of these ends up a little bit more, and the next thing you know, you're two dollars on a thousand.
You know, the taxes are gonna be out of control, and people are gonna be screaming, like, where, 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 where are we gonna get this money from?
Eminent domain.
So, I'm, I'm gonna need a motion. What do you wanna go for? Where do you wanna be?
Florida's sounding good right now. Cut it half, go for a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I'm good with, I'm good with that.
Okay, then, I, I, I'll make a motion, we make it a hundred thousand.
A second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to make it a hundred thousand. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed. It comes down to you, mister bitch.
Yeah, I'm opposed too. They want two hundred thousand dollars to do the, to do the work. We need to get the work done.
Listen, we don't have the money, not this year.
How many, uh, Marissa, how many? We, I assume we put out an RFP for this, right? How many?
We didn't. Oh. It was a committee. Okay.
Where this hundred ninety thousand dollar number come from?
We had an architect that actually worked with us, so this past year we put an article in to see if they would take a look at the site. From there, that guy said that he would give us an engineering design phase amount. But he isn't like the end of this, like, it's an engineer that has to come in and, and look at all of it, so. He basically gave us a ballpark figure of how much he thinks it's going to cost in order for us to move forward.
So we only talk to one person?
Because no one else would get back to us. Yeah, but I mean, seriously, like, Will hat.
Should we wait till we actually get the property before we done moneying it?
Who's got property?
We already own the property, it's, it would be.
Right here.
Where's it going?
Wait, now, I thought the police station was going up Fortinburg. No.
No, no.
It's not even a good place for a police station.
So, the thought process that, well, I would really.
Okay, now I'm, I'm gonna take it by the.
And I would think that Andy would agree that if you have questions about the committee, then you should ask them. Uh, the committee met several times, making sure that we were kind of pacing the right way, wanted to put it in front of the people the right way. I mean, this would solve the police department issue and the public works issue, because both of those are under review by Primax. If you don't do something soon, your insurance carrier is going to drop you.
No, I get that.
And so, I'm just saying, like, you're coming out these questions, but like, we spent a lot of time and caring to getting to this spot. Like. Please ask us questions.
We, we don't have the money, I, I, I mean, this is.
I know, but I think.
Example of something that can be put off, I mean, this is not the year for it, I, this, this, you know, there's no money. You know, we're, we're, we're pushing our limits to get this far, to get all our budgets taken care of, and, and I, I just don't see, this is a commitment. Beyond where we need to go, or, or can go. Uh, and, and I think that the, the whole idea of, you know, what we're trying to do here has to be looked at, I think there are alternative buildings or, or. You know, properties that, you know, may give us a better deal.
We looked at several alternative properties, this was the best of the bad.
Right here, not at Freidenberg, though.
Yeah, but this doesn't include the Freidenberg option, if, that, that should come to fruition. Alright, so.
Freidenberg wasn't available at the time.
So, but I, I think we're, we should be in a position of saying, let's, let's, let's pursue that.
All I'm saying is it wasn't a quick decision, like, we spent many.
No, we, we get it, well, my concern is we're looking to spend two hundred thousand dollars, and we only talked to one vendor, I mean, that's insane.
It wasn't that, it was that they wouldn't come and meet with us. None of these people wanted to meet with us, I mean, like.
Not ready, then it's, then.
Yeah, but the other thing, if we can't spend two hundred thousand to get a study done for here and then go eminent in Freidenberg and all.
It's not a study, it's the engineering.
It's not a study, it's the actual engineering design.
But it's the engineering drawings and design, but you're gonna spend all this money on the engineering and design, and then we might have another building open up.
And, and what's if it's a three million dollar building? It, it can't happen, so, wh- what do we, we put two hundred thousand dollars into what? Something we can't afford.
An engineering package, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, that, that's, you gotta be careful with that mistake, you know, if you're gonna design something, make sure you can afford what you're designing. I, I, and I don't think we're there.
Well, I mean, you guys voted three two, so I mean, it can go through as a warrant.
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't.
Oh, I thought all three you said you were.
You're opposed, you guys proposed to cut to a hundred thousand.
Our, our motion.
You're a hundred, you guys were saying, let's put a hundred thousand, and then we said no.
And that died, so.
So you guys wanna put two hundred thousand in, right?
No.
I don't wanna put anything in.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I'm in agreement.
Okay, somebody make a motion, please.
I make a motion not to put. A warrant article forward for the two hundred thousand for the engineering drawings, until we can establish where the police station's going.
I will second that.
Okay, so I have a motion, a second to kill the, the article. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I was opposed.
You were opposed?
Yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I think we should put some money away, because we, like you said, we can go into a CRF and we can use it first, I think, not putting anything in. Then we're gonna wind up two or three years down the road, we got nothing, we're gonna be, oh no, now.
Yeah, that's fair.
Well, we can, yeah, figure that out, that's, I mean, it's a legitimate.
Yeah.
Point.
We've still got time to come back at it, we've got until the fourteenth.
Don't worry, this isn't over.
What a word is fair for now.
Article, Police Department Capital Reserve Fund Police Station.
Can we just do this? Nope, uh, the, we received ten thousand dollars donated for the purpose of putting in any police station capital reserve fund, but you need a warrant article in order to do it. No taxation.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum, sum of ten thousand dollars to be added to the Police Station Capital Reserve Fund, established in twenty twenty-four. For the purposes, purpose of purchasing or constructing a police station. Said funds to come from an anonymous donation of which funds are being held in the general fund.
I make a motion to. Accept.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion to approve the article, and, second, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Article, Police Department Car Capital Reserve Fund, estimated tax impact point zero seven cents. Shall the town of Ashland raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars to be deposited into the Police Department Capital Reserve Fund? Established in two thousand and thirteen, for the purpose of repairing and purchasing police department vehicles. Majority vote required.
Why wasn't included in the budget? This is something separate, they can't include it in the budget? It's the capital reserve.
It's, it's capital reserve, yeah.
Oh, we know what's in there?
This is the budget you have to use by year end.
Uh, I do, I wanna say it's under fifteen thousand, cause we had to purchase two cars in the same year.
Under what? Fifteen?
Under fifteen.
Nice Ford Fiesta.
I'll make that motion to approve that.
Yep, a second.
So I have a motion and a second. On the Police Department Car Capital Reserve Fund. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Double stack.
Ashland Public Works Capital Reserve Fund, estimated tax impact seven thousand doll- uh, seven thousand. Seven cents.
No, no, no.
Shall the town of Ashland vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty thousand dollars to be deposited? Into the Department of Public Works Capital Reserve Fund, established in two thousand sixteen, for the purpose of vehicles. And equipment replacement and or repairs. Majority vote required.
Did we get an inventory list of, from DPW? Of all the machines and?
Uh, we get a, we get a list of that every year for the insurance company, I haven't seen.
You asked for like, before we keep putting money into, like, what do we actually have? Never again.
I'll make a mo- I'll make a motion to, uh, put that thirty thousand dollars in the DPW Capital Reserve Fund.
I'll second it, so I have a motion and a second. Um, for the Public Works Capital Reserve Fund. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Road and Bridge Capital Reserve Fund, estimated tax impact thirty-three cents. Shall the town of Ashland vote to raise and appropriate the sum of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be deposited into the Road and Bridge? Capital Reserve Fund, established in twenty thirteen, majority revote.
Haven't we been saying that our bridges are great and?
Our bridges are great, but you've been out North Ashland Road lately, you've been out some of these back roads lately?
Roads.
No, it's road and bridges.
It's like our bridge just got worked on, that's good.
Every year.
Yeah, this is how we pay.
Uh, I'll, I'll make that motion, uh, it, it's, it's a lot of money, but the town needs roads, and, and they gotta be maintained.
What, what was it? Uh, does anybody know what it was last year?
One twenty-five.
Okay, what is it now, one fifty?
One fifty, yeah.
Okay.
How is it all spent?
Uh, just about, Craig generally has to borrow against himself.
So you got maybe a couple grand left in there, is what you're saying?
This, this, this is, this is underfunded, the process.
Under ten.
This is underfunded.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, well, hold on, let me, let me revise that, we, we have funds in there that are going to be spent on a. Project, oh no, that's the public works one.
Okay, so I have a motion.
A second, do you say it in a second?
Okay. For the Road and Bridge Capital Reserve Fund, for a hundred thou- a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Got roads pretty nice.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Building Maintenance and Repair Capital Reserve Fund, estimated tax impact eleven cents. Shall the town of Ashland vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars to be deposited into the Building Maintenance? And Repair Capital Reserve Fund, for the purpose of maintaining and repairing all town buildings. Majority vote required.
What was the total amount, Andy?
Fifty.
Fifty thousand.
What, what, what was that last year? Wasn't that much, was it?
Oh, it was thirty.
Thirty, I.
So is that different from? Buildings and grounds?
No, that is it.
I didn't hear anything that said anything about ground.
Building maintenance.
It's building maintenance and repair, it was building and grounds years ago. They changed the title at some point, but it's the same, it's the same one, it got renamed at some point.
Why did it go up twenty thousand?
Yeah, why'd it go up?
We need to replace the heating and cooling in the town hall. Um, and we got A quote, we're working on more quotes, but it's in the neighborhood of fifty to sixty thousand dollars to do it.
So you take the whole budget?
Well, it's, there's money building up in there, but you also don't wanna deplete it.
Cause remember, it rolls over, it's a CRF.
Yeah.
Yeah, that building needs a little color.
It does, I mean, we had somebody come in and do a pretty cost effective. Thought, like a plan to come through, but we'll have to get other vendors in there to look at it, um, but we have an issue with the AC unit.
What about the mold issue that, that came up?
Uh, that's a great question, um, I actually, I'm gonna see.
Tendonate.
Tom tomorrow, I'm gonna ask him when they're coming in.
But that getting paid for the.
That would come out of this one, yeah.
Uh, the building needs some help.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the Building Maintenance and Repair Capital Reserve Fund for fifty thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Library Capital Reserve Fund, estimated tax impact five cents. Shall the town of Ashland vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to be deposited? Into the Ashland Library Capital Reserve Fund, established in twenty fifteen, for the purpose of purchasing. Building and or renovating a facility, including furnishings and equipment. For the Ashland Town Library, majority vote required.
I make a motion to accept the five cent per thousand increase for the, for the library, they came and presented last meeting on, um, making it handicap accessible.
I have a question, how much do they have in that? Don't they still have most of the four hundred thousand in there?
Yeah.
I think they thought, yeah.
Go fast.
They allocated it. They're gonna fundraise the other half of it.
I think what we agreed is they were gonna put that four hundred thousand dollars into improvements, and they're asking us to chip in twenty-five, so I think we accept it on a hot basis.
And then they're gonna do something.
So I have a motion and a second for the twenty-five thousand dollars for the Library Capital Reserve Fund. Do we have any further discussion?
Those, nickel and a thousand?
Yeah. Five cents, I'm sorry.
Nickel and a thousand?
Yeah, it was twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, nickel, yeah, yeah.
I mean. In the past, before they get the four hundred thousand, we were giving them twenty-five every single year. And it wasn't being spent.
They're at two hundred thousand right now, you just heard David say, I believe it's two hundred thousand, am I correct?
Oh, I, I couldn't tell you right offhand, uh, I don't control that fund, I, I really just.
Yeah, um, so between the two funds, they've got six, six hundred thousand dollars. You just heard him say one point four million is what they're looking at spending.
I don't have a problem helping them, they, 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 you know, that, that, the, um, donation is, is a big part of it, and, and. That building is another one that needs, you know, that, that's where they're gonna live, it, it needs to be fixed, we, they presented the plan, you know, when you weren't here, and it was.
Sorry.
You know, a nice three-phase plan, uh.
Handicap accessible.
Yeah, right.
It was well done.
And I think, you know, it went beyond being a library, it became a community center too, for teenagers and, you know, children, I, I think, you know, we, we can help them if they'll help themselves.
We also voted down the old school, so it's kind of like, we can eliminate our lemons now.
Well, I mean, a- and that is part of the responsibility, town needs a, a decent library, and, and we couldn't afford the, the, the other building, and, and so, let's, let's make this, you know, something we can work with.
Any further discussion?
No.
So I have a motion. To approve twenty-five thousand dollars for the Library Capital Reserve Fund. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Four one, motion carries.
I think we need to come back to this one, pending a conversation about grandsons.
The library?
No. Okay. Article, Emergency Lanes.
Is that what he allocated them?
Shall the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept the provisions of RSA? Two thirty-one, semicolon, one fifty-nine, dash, A, entitled emergency lanes. Notwithstanding RSA? Two thirty-one, semicolon, fifty-nine, or any other provisions of the law, a town may. Raise and appropriate, and the selectman may expend money for repair, repair of any. Class six highway or private way, which has been declared an emergency lane. Such repairs may include removal, removal of brush, repair of washouts or culverts, or any other work deemed necessary. To render such a passable way by firefighting equipment. And rescue or other emergency vehicles. No expenditures shall be made unless the selectman, following a public hearing, declare the relevant class six highway. Private way or portion thereof as an emergency lane. And make written findings recorded in the minutes of the meeting. That the public need for keeping such lane passable by emergency vehicles is supported by an. Identified public welfare or safety interest, which surpasses or differs. Or differs twice, from any private benefits to landowners abutting such a lane. In case of a private way, notice shall be mailed to all persons known to have a legal interest in the way. Ten days prior to the hearing, and the emergency lane shall not be declared if permission is dot denied by any person with a legal right to deny such. Permission. Either the appearance or non-appearance of such persons at hearings shall prevent. Such permission from the latter being denied or withdrawn. A declaration under this article shall not be construed to create any duty or liability. For the town toward any person or property. Utilization of this article shall at the sole and unfettered discretion of the town and its officials. And no landowner, or any other person shall be entitled to damages by virtue. Of the creation of an emergency lane. Or the failure to create them, or the management of them, or the failure to maintain them. No person shall be deemed to have any right to relaying such maintenance.
And and the benefit of this is?
I think we need to table this until Fred is here.
Yeah, so basically this allows you to work on private road in the case of an emergency. Cause you can't spend.
But it says you gotta give them a ten day notice.
Oh, I I asked about that, cause I said, well, that doesn't make sense. You can't anticipate a um.
Emergency.
Emergency, and that is for the public hearing to um. Because you would have to make have a public hearing in order to expend the funds. They have to be invited to the meeting. So like if you did damage on somebody's property, you can't just pay for things, right, due to an emergency? So if we had to go out there and attend to something.
Not right in that one.
No, I know, but I thought was I questioned that exact thing and that's what Fred was saying, so.
I would like to make a motion to table this.
Yeah.
Need more. Well, I think it needs to be condensed. I mean, that's like a run on word. Nobody's gonna read that when they vote.
No.
I stopped listening.
Okay, petition to warrant art.
Is that a consensus? Yes, okay.
Estimated tax impact, three cents. We registered voters in the town of Ashland present this petition article to be included in the twenty twenty five. Town of Ashland warrant. Shall the voters? Raise and appropriate twelve thousand dollars to Grafton County Senior Citizens Counseling Incorporated. For services. For Ashland residents. From July first of twenty three to June thirtieth of twenty four, Grafton County Senior Citizens Council provided. Services for a hundred and seven Ashland residents and Service Link provided residents. The services for fourteen residents. These services include nutrition, transportation. Outreach support, Service Link support and more. The cost of providing these services was a hundred thousand dollars. And change.
Is that the same amount they asked for last year?
Yes.
I I I I think we we have to support that.
Yeah, and what, three cents?
Yeah, and I'll second it. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Petition warrant article. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine thousand six hundred and ninety two dollars. For Pemme Baker Hospice and Home Health. As a nonprofit agency, PBH and HH. Provides services without regard to ability to pay and serves many uninsured and underinsured. Clients. Many of the services they provide are not fully covered by insurance. The requested appropriation amounts to less than five dollars per year per resident. Based on the rent residence consensus data and represents a small fraction. Of the cost of providing services to the residents in their home. Pemme Baker Hospice and Home Healthcare provides home health, hospice. Impalative care services in the Ashland community as well as educational programs, workshops. And bereavement counseling. These services to uninsured or underinsured patients help the town limit. Welfare payments for medical services.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Now, a motion to approve the warrant article.
I'll second.
And a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the warrant article for the Pemme Baker Hospice and Home Health? Agency for nine thousand six hundred and ninety two dollars. Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Petition to warrant article estimated task impact one cent. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand eight hundred and seventy six dollars for the operation. Of Tri-County Community Action Program Incorporated service programs in Ashland. Transportation, energy assistance, weatherization. Guardianship, Head Start, homeless intervention and prevention, disaster relief. And Tamworth Dental Center.
Oh, yes.
It's right around the corner.
Why is that in there though? Who, um, have we done this in the past?
Yeah, we do every year.
Yes.
Cap cap is big everywhere.
Do we spend it every year?
When is the petition warrant article you give them?
Oh, that's right, right. That's right.
Yeah. I think that's the same as last year too.
Yep.
About to approve. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve the warrant article and a second. Um, for three thousand eight hundred and seventy six dollars for Tri-County cap. All in favor or any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Petition warrant article, tax impact zero. To see if the town of Ashland will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve hundred and fifty dollars for Transport Central. A five oh one C three nonprofit organization based in Plymouth. This funding will support our efforts to continue providing free transportation to qualified individuals. Who lack other means of getting to medical appointments or seeking medical treatment. A qualified individual is defined as someone who is over sixty years of old of age. A person with a disability or a veteran who does not have access to alternate alternative. Transportation. Since its inception. In twenty twenty three, Transport Central has been serving Ashland and. The other towns within our nineteen town encampment area. Over the past decade, we have facilitated more than thirty one thousand rides with our volunteer drivers covering over one. Point five million miles to assist citizens in need. In addition to transportation, Transport Center Central offers mobility management services. We assist elderly and disabled clients with a range of transported. Transportation related issues, including rescheduling appointments, finding alternate. Transportation pro- uh options and navigating hospital and agency services more effectively.
Uh, didn't we just approve the transport?
It's a different agency. These are all outside agencies asking for money.
But didn't we just approve another agency that'll come in and give people rights to their appointments?
Yeah, they're all, they're all doing it and they're all needed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've, you know, I I've run into these groups with people and and they do perform a service that a lot of people rely on.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, no doubt.
Oh, man, sorry. I'll second.
I have a motion in a second to approve.
I don't remember what's next.
Just give me a chance.
Warrant article for Transport Central. All in, uh, any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please note for the record, I abstain. Any opposed?
Um.
Motion carries.
Marissa, are you, you're waiting for the curse one and then the other one we're missing? That we have to address or else we're gonna have to deal with it again is the re, the planning board is supposed to. Propose the rezoning.
So the planning board does there separately once they're done with their public hearings, they include it with our warrant.
You don't.
Access tomorrow night.
Uh.
To make a recommendation.
I was like, the due drop in is gonna be back on the agenda soon if we don't resolve.
That is not being done.
That is not being done? Oh, boy. Okay.
So when the planning board has to, you don't make recommendations on them.
That's fine. So we are not recommending the rezoning to allow the due drop in to operate.
Yeah, I don't know what happened there, but I thought that was gonna get fixed.
Okay, so here we go.
Are we gonna put them in?
Can we put it in?
No, not that one. Like for the parking rack for, oh.
Yeah, so that was supposed to be determined tonight, so we'll have to put one in. We just were doing the majority of the articles that we had, cause we're gonna have to have especially even. So we're gonna have to, like the curse one we're still working on, petition articles can still come in till the fourteenth. We have to figure out this thing with eminent domain. So now that I know we're gonna go for the S R F. Um, is there a percentage or a certain amount per site? Cause I would recommend against doing a flat number because then if you don't fill over your sites, you're still committed to put in a flat number.
Right. Oh.
If you put it up to thirty eight hundred, what does ten grand work out per site? Cause then you could just say per site that pays X amount of money goes in and then we can draft it and you'll see about your special meeting.
Well, excuse me, that, there's nothing we can do to uh like grandfather in the due drop in so that this doesn't keep coming around or? You know what I'm saying? Is there anything we can?
Yeah, it could have been rezoned and I I am, I just discussed it with the the planning board chairman and I don't understand where that went out of control, but. That was, we were hoping that was gonna get resolved.
Okay.
To do it for like fifteen percent or something.
Yeah.
I'll wait for the email.
Cause it comes out to a weird number.
Yes. And so do we?
Oh, I meant like per site. So like what's your, so how many sites do you have? Twenty three?
Yes.
Okay. And we're saying it's gonna be thirty eight.
Just let the finance person do it.
Well.
So it's like one sixty five and change per site?
Right.
So why don't you just do a hundred and sixty six dollars from each campsite goes into the water pump? So then you're not, cause if you do like ten grand.
Why don't you just do a percentage?
Do a percentage.
Yeah.
Having a subordinate want to do it. It's not up to me.
Well, if you do the percentage, you don't have to change it later when you raise the rates, right?
This is true.
What's more, love it.
What percentage do you want?
Eighty.
Eminem domain. It does say you can repossess property for public purposes, so.
I I've done it where I come from, so I I I know.
So you'd have to use it as the police department.
Fifteen percent?
Hard war, but.
Are you figuring that out?
Okay.
You put it on the table, things happen.
I thought you were doing math over there.
I was doing math, but not the same thing you were doing.
Just gonna go around eminently domaining.
If you do uh twelve percent, it's uh basically ten five.
Yeah.
Off the eighty seven four number.
Yeah, alright, it's up to you guys.
Twelve percent, okay, we can do that.
I mean, cause that's gonna be the, if the campground was filled, that would be the the minimum number, right? And if we increase rates in the future, obviously that's gonna.
Right.
Continue to go up.
How are we gonna word this? Like the revolving fund for the campground? Campground and beach?
Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation. I I don't think.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
It it's a fund for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Parks and Rec CRF.
Is is used by the director to, you know.
Remind you direct.
Okay, so we'll all um, we're gonna get that drafted with a twelve percent. From campground fees. Now, is that going to include, is that just their site rental or is it all fees related to the campground?
Talk to them.
Oh, I know, I'm just trying to look in this direction, but.
I would do it, I would do it off everything. I mean, and if you get people, you know, if you go that route where you're doing both.
So all fees collected by the campground.
Total campground revenue. That way we can always go, it can always go up, right? The more you get in there, the more money you're gonna get.
Okay, do we have any old business?
Almost done.
Any new business?
I don't have any new business, but I just wanted to say I was disappointed that the work we did on the budgets at the last meeting were shot down. At the budget committee. The raises that we proposed for some individuals were um.
Declined.
Declined and uh I just think it's a little unfair now that we have directors making less than our administrators.
Yeah, yeah, this is a problem.
I think it's a real issue and.
When did the news come out? I didn't even hear this.
I didn't know about it. Um, I was.
They don't, they they don't get declined, they just get a, they're not.
It was not, it was not accepted.
But but it's not supported, but it still goes through.
No.
No, no.
Budget committee is who puts in the budget.
So I was.
It's the bottom line, not not the.
The board of selectmen or Fred, whoever who makes the decisions, cause we found out he doesn't, he's not in charge of you.
Well, he, so whomever is in charge still can allocate those funds, you would just have to take it from somewhere else.
So even though the budget committee doesn't support that and they put their own budget through. Ultimately, that decision comes down to this board or your town manager.
Marissa, was the ten thousand dollars we moved from the electric department to put towards the director finance salary moved? Or was that also in question?
Okay, so you tried to.
We tried to do a lot of stuff.
You tried to do a lot of things and we, the budget committee went back to the way that it was. And there was a reason for that, but I've.
Cause the only thing is we can't keep supporting if you're not doing a job with the uh.
So my contract is, we can discuss that, but you would have to ask me to do that in non-public and I'm not going to discuss.
No, no, no.
It is has to do with my contract though, cause it's written in there in the language that I can.
I'm not talking about your contract. There's an allocation right now to the electric department that we have to move.
But the terms under which are in my contract and I will discuss this with you in a private meeting. But there's a reason why it needs to exist the way that it does.
Before you get upset, we're talking about everyone's, like we've.
No, but you just asked me about the ten thousand.
Uh, my question was re, we reallocated something in the budget, was that?
The electric and water and sewer have not yet been discussed.
So it was reverted to the original. It was reverted to the original numbers, not the numbers we proposed in the last meeting. That's my question.
For what?
For the, we took money out of the electric department.
The electric, water and sewer will be discussed Wednesday night.
Oh, I thought you were saying something else, okay.
But you're welcome to be there and I would encourage you to be there.
Yeah, I think it goes both ways. I was kinda discouraged that when we held the joint meetings, there were so few people from the budget committee and then I felt like. We were kinda, we had some real conversations about why these movements were necessary, why some things had to be solidified. Because they were in the wrong place and we were trying to support the employees and they just got blanketly. Repealed.
Right.
And um, and I don't think that's a true working relationship at at all, um.
Yeah, that's just, that's just plain.
Especially all the effort Chris went through to.
Well, this is the reason why a lot of towns, why residents fight against budget committees, because you have people that come in and try to make decisions and.
It's a one dimensional decision.
It is and and, you know, we went through in the town where I worked last year in the budget committee that someone proposed, got shot down.
Yeah.
Because people wanna leave that with the select board. So, but here we are.
But, so my question is then, can we, I understand where the budget committee is, so can we allocate, like there are a couple. Scenarios and I don't wanna talk about contracts or individual people, but like where we should allocate money.
Well, I I thought what was gonna happen was they're gonna be a a review of salaries.
Yeah.
Okay, so that it puts it all in proper perspective.
Right.
To to deal with what you're saying. We we don't want subordinates making more more than their manager.
No.
Which which is happening.
Yeah, which is happening. And and I I thought that we were gonna get from the town, the the town manager, the finance director. Uh, you know, a reconciliation that says, here's our recommendation for what the the town compensation pyramid should look like.
And I thought we did a good job at the last meeting and that was what I was talking to Marissa years is I I thought we landed on.
There's a thing that I'm just not willing to discuss.
No, I'm not discussing.
Yeah, no, we don't want.
We don't wanna discuss your contract. We're saying reallocated money so that everyone's.
There's a reason why.
Okay, we can take that in a non-public and I don't wanna. Okay, we can take that in a non-public, and I don't wanna, I, I guess the reason is, we talk about everyone, we're talking about the budget here.
Yeah, we wanna rationalize the whole.
We wanna rationalize everyone.
No, I understand, I, we.
And if we can't have those conversations.
You guys asked me what somebody is, makes for pay, I gave you guys a spreadsheet.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What we need is a recommendation that says this rationalizes the system.
Fred, make a recommendation to you, that's up to Fred to do, or you.
The board can direct Fred to make the recommendation, that's what we should be doing, you know, he's the town manager, he needs to make the re. I, I thought that it was in the works, cause I had kind of brought this up previously.
Isn't that basically what is in, you know, he goes over the budget and says
Yeah.
Town managers part, departments part, border selectmen's part, budget committee's part?
Yeah, but we don't get to see where it is in perspective to each other, like, we have a, we have a, we have a director who's making less than their subordinate, you know?
That's not okay.
Okay, it's not okay, that's right.
Those numbers in there aren't true.
But we can't do anything about it if the budget committee already did that.
Kendall's hand's gonna fall off.
Well, certainly can.
Wednesday night, the eighth, the budget committee will be meeting to finalize their budget. You're most welcome to come to that and, and give your, your expertise, we would appreciate that, okay? Um.
Sounds necessary.
We then go, from there, we go to the public hearing on the sixteenth.
Yeah.
At the end of that, the final budget will be proposed, so you have two opportunities to make changes to it from, from the audience.
Well, to suggest changes?
To suggest changes. Yeah.
And of course, as a bill of reception, you can amend the whole thing.
Exactly, yeah, so really you have three, but I would really encourage you to come to um the, meeting on the eighth and, and present this so that those members have the full understanding.
Yeah, and I think that's where I get hung up, is that, I thought that's why we invited the budget committee to all of our meetings. So that they would come in.
I understand that, I, I, I sent the mails out, I think that's the.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, and apologies, I'll, on the eighth, I'll be, I'll be on a red eye. So, I'd rather be at the budget committee. Um, okay.
Do we have any other selectmen's items?
No.
I had a question about the memorandum that was put, everybody saw this.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
From Fred, um.
Is that the one we talked about earlier?
Did we talk about? The department heads have, certain department heads have into.
Yes.
Um, I'm just wondering why it came about, and I mean, how, what, what are we asking for with this? What did Fred ask for with this? And why?
You just said that, you just said the key word, what's Fred asking?
Yeah, so they.
Fred's not here.
Talk to Fred.
Yeah, we need to talk to Fred about that, yep.
You can't text him. No, you really can't.
No.
But shouldn't we find out what the reasoning is before it goes ahead?
It's already been sent out, right?
Yeah, right, but it hasn't started, right, isn't it Wednesday? They're talking about it?
Whether the town manager is within his uh.
Yeah, he's the one who's trying to do that, though, it's relating to purchasers and planned purchases, so he's basically trying to make people plan their purchases. The gist of it is, that's what he's gonna do, but he's gonna make a whole presentation on.
So we people buying stuff without doing POs, is that what's happening?
Yeah.
Yeah, submitting them after the fact.
Yep. Seen that?
Projects assigned to each crew for each day or part of the day?
So he wants to know, like, not picking anybody in particular, but like electric or public works, and what they're doing on a regular basis, so he wants to have a schedule. This is what you guys are working on on a regular basis, he wants to know that on a weekly basis.
This is what you're doing this week.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he's asking for a day by day, I mean, I get the week.
He is on a weekly basis.
Right.
So what are you doing? What are you doing on Monday, but tell me what you're doing on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and follow me. And then if you're doing expensive projects, we need to know that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right, that makes sense, but I just feel like some of the, by week, you need to know where everybody is doing for each thing, each day is a long watch, because these depart.
It's microdaging.
The department heads are gonna have to take time out of what they could be doing.
I'm not just. I'm not defending anybody.
To, yeah, to do the paperwork.
But I think that there were some issues that have come about that has made this necessary, is what I'm gonna say.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting a sense of, that Fred has found a, you know, an issue here that he wants to address.
Yes, and he's making a plan to address.
But is it with everybody he's doing, or is it a specific department or person?
Looks like everybody.
But, but if he, right, but if there's a problem with one department, then why do you do a blanket thing with all of them? To make all the department heads, I, I'm not in this, I'm exempt, so that's not why I'm saying this. But, I mean, if he has a problem with one department, then he should talk to them, and not make everybody else have to.
Talk to Fred.
Yeah, I think we need Fred.
Fred's the one that issued the, get his take on it, it's.
It could be all business at the next meeting when he's here, yep.
Cause they're having a meeting Wednesday, correct? Isn't that what that is?
Yeah, he's gonna explain it.
Yeah, and I can't be there, cause they're having it while I'm at school.
You're gonna be on a red eye tail.
Well, I'm gonna be working, and they're doing it during the day.
Anything else? We have an item we have to take care of in non-public tonight, under RSA ninety-one dash A semicolon three. Have a good night off.
Enjoy.
What, what time is Wednesday here?
It is five o'clock, here.
Here.